All right, good evening, everyone. It's 7:02. We're going to call the meeting to order. It's March 25th, 2025, Bridgewater Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, regular meeting. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. Specifically, on January 15th, 2025, proper notice was sent to the Courier-News, the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk at the Township of Bridgewater, and posted on the municipal bulletin board. Please be aware of the zoning board of adjustment policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30, and no new testimony will be taken after 10:00 p.m. If you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, Nancy. If we can get a roll call.
Chairman Foose?
Here.
Mr. Wadley?
I hear.
Mrs. Amin?
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes, here.
Mr. Bonjourno?
Here.
Mr. Gieske?
Here.
Mr. Seacat?
Here.
Mr. Kulak?
Here.
Mr. Vessio?
Here.
Mr. Gabbit?
Here.
Catherine Sarmad? Township Planner, present. William Burr?
Here.
Township Engineer, present.
Richard Aller?
Here.
Attorney. You have a quorum. You can proceed.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to members of the public that would like to speak on any land use issue, which is not on our agenda this evening. You can come up, grab the microphone. Hello, Ms. Franco.
Good evening. Do you want me to sign in?
Oh.
Kathy Franco, 766 Sweet Mac Road. I'm only here tonight to thank you all. I realize that everyone on this dais, other than the attorney, are volunteers, and I really appreciate your dedication, your diligence, your thorough reviews of every application that comes before this board. Zoning variances deal with everything from homeowners wanting to expand their homes or putting a shed that might be too close to property line from the zoning laws, to developers buying properties with intentions to build projects on land that is not zoned for. I realize you must go through this process, and I appreciate that. I thank you for your patience and thoughtful consideration of the zoning that this township has in place, and for your continued listening of the concerns of residents as they bring victims forth to you. Thank you all very much.
Very much, Kathy. That was very nice of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're going to close the public portion. We have no minutes for approval. We have two resolutions, and let's do the easy one first. The first is the appointment of board professional consultant, traffic engineer Maurice Rashad. Looking for changes, comments on the board?
No changes and move to approve.
Mr. Waddely moving. Do I have a second, please?
Exactly.
All right, Mr. Bonjourno. Nancy, get a roll call, please.
Chairman Foose?
Yes.
Mr. Waddely?
Yes.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Gieske?
Yes.
Mr. Seacat?
Yes.
Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
Mr. Vessio?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbit?
Yes.
Next up, we have St. Bernard, the resolution. I know, Mrs. Amin, you had a few changes.
I have them from her. I can run down those for you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Go for it.
So, paragraph eight, page four, paragraph eight, again, the last line where it says "construction," should say "of" the Musoleum addition. Page four, again, paragraph 10, about halfway down, says, "Mr. Barry testified that as a conditional use." I'll take the words "as a conditional use" out, so it'll just say "testified that the proposed Musoleum addition does not satisfy," et cetera. And then on the next page, at the top, where the very first line says, "Further opine that the only visual impact would be to the," say, "Raritan Valley Country Club." And then at paragraph 13, in page five, the FAR reference should be to conditional use, and D3. That's all I had.
All right. Any other comments or changes? Looking for a motion with changes?
With the changes.
Mr. Waddely?
Motion.
And that was Mrs. Amin as the second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Sorry. I had Mr. Waddely as recused from the St. Bernard.
Well, that's right. I can't.
Okay, so let's do Amin and Gieske as the second. If John, you're okay?
Mr. Gieske?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. He was not eligible to vote.
Mr. -- okay. Do I have a second, please?
One second.
All right, that was Mr. Fresco.
Chairman Foose?
Yes.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Seacat?
Yes.
And Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have our applications for this evening. The first, Rich, could you take us through Mr. Coakley's letter on 1200 Route 22 Land Investors?
On 1200 Route 22, we received a letter from Mr. Coakley indicating that the planning board has recommended to the town council approval of a redevelopment plan which would impact their proposed development. So they have requested that their application be adjourned until September 9th, so that that redevelopment plan can move forward with the council, and if it does, it would come off of our agenda.
Okay. So if anyone's here for that case, 1200 Route 22, that'll be carried till September 9th, 2025.
Without further notice from the applicant.
Thank you, Rich. All right. So we have two applications tonight. We're going to start off with the Bridgewater self-storage. We're going to do 90 minutes on this case, and then 90 minutes on Germonk Oil. And as Bridgewater comes up, I just want to address members of the public. First of all, thank you for coming out tonight. I want you to each know that most of the board, if not all of the board, knows what it's like to sit in those seats. It can be frustrating. You're losing the night. Tonight's my daughter's birthday, and I'm still here, so I feel your pain. What I really want to take you very quickly through, it seems complicated, but we do stick to a set of rules. The rulebook is the municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey. Basically, the applicant is going to present their case. They're going to present supporting witnesses. After each witness testifies, you're going to have an opportunity to question, and I underline the word "question," that when you come up and ask questions of a witness, please form your comments in the form of a question, and make them be based on the testimony that you heard. After all the applicants are done, I promise anyone that wants to speak will be able to speak for or against this case as long as you need. You can come up and use the microphone. That's the time you can make grand statements or give your own testimony. So really, that's what we're going to try and do. We're going to do 90 minutes. The time is 7:10 now, so we'll probably take a break around 8:40, 8:45. And with that, good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Kupisi, on behalf of the applicant. As the chairman, just noted, the applicant is Bridgewater Storage. The property before the board this evening consists of two lots, 351 Route 28 and 322 Route 22, known as Block 400, lots 1 and 2 on the township's tax map.
Mr. Kupisi, before we get too far, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to confirm jurisdiction with the board. I did review your notice. It was in adequate form. It was served upon the property owners within 200 feet timely and published timely, so the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So the property is a through lot with frontage on Route 22 to the north and Route 28 to the south. As I'm sure most of the board members are aware, it's utilized presently as a single-family dwelling and farm stand on one parcel, and an abandoned commercial building on the other parcel, commonly known as the Tectonic Building, that's been dormant for quite some time. What we're proposing to do by way of this application is remove all of the existing improvements on the site, consolidate the two lots into one new building lot, and on the new building lot, develop a three-story self-storage building that would be serviced by 21 parking spaces. Of particular note, the site has no access onto Route 28. The sole means of ingress and egress to the site would be off of Route 22, and we're trying, by way of the application, to maintain as much of the existing landscape buffer along Route 28, and supplementing that as part of this application. There are certain variance relief that's required as a result of what we're proposing. We are seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, as well as a use variance. The properties in the townships see three zone, which does not permit self-storage facilities, so we are proposing a use that is not permitted, so we need a D1 use variance relative to that component. The building that's proposed exceeds the maximum allowable floor area ratio, so we do require a D4 use variance as to exceeding the maximum allowable FAR. And we have some variances as to the building setback along Route 22. 100 feet is proposed where 200 feet is required. A minimum parking space setback to Route 22, 100 feet required, 57.6 feet proposed. We're required to have four loading spaces, but given the nature of the use, we're only proposing two, and the loading spaces are really internal to the building, as our architect will discuss. The loading space stall size is slightly non-conforming and requires variance relief, and we are proposing a single freestanding sign along Route 22 that does not comply with the setback requirement, 30 feet is required, and we're proposing for that sign to be five feet from the property line. There is no signage proposed along Route 28. There is no signage proposed along the southerly elevation of the building. The signage is limited solely as to the northeast corner of the building. That would be as you're facing the property from Route 22. It would be on the left portion of the building. So we were mindful to the residential corridor to the south, and tried to keep activities there at a minimum with no signage along that portion of the property as well. Given the time that we have this evening, Mr. Chairman, we're going to start with our engineer, Matthew Kunsman, and, if time permits, our architect, Bill McGreevy. But we'll see where time permits and how we're able to progress to the application. We do acknowledge receipt also of the township's various review letters, namely the board planners' letter and township engineers' letter. A large majority of the comments that were made in those letters, we can stipulate to making the necessary modifications, but we'll speak to those in detail as we provide testimony.
All right. Very good. Hi. Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Then your full name for the record, please?
My name is Matthew Kunsman.
Can you spell your last name, please?
K-U-N-S-M-A-N.
Thank you.
Mr. Kunsman, can you give us your qualifications, please?
Sure. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Syracuse University. I am currently a senior project manager at Bowler, located at 30 Independence Boulevard in Moore, New Jersey. I've worked on numerous commercial and self-storage projects across the state of New Jersey for the last 10 years as well. And I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. And lastly, I've been accepted in front of various planning and zoning boards across the state.
All right. This board accepts you as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. So first, I'm going to introduce an aerial exhibit. It's prepared by Bowler, dated March 20th, 2025. It's -- it should be on the screen in front of you. So let me know if you can't see that. I have a board in my bag.
So we're going to refer to that and mark it, please, as A1 with today's date.
I'll add it in the corner. All right. So this is an aerial exhibit showing existing conditions of the site. The site is outlined in yellow in the center of the page, and the zone lines are shown in blue, bolded. So surrounding the site to the north is Route 22. Beyond that is a wooded area. To the east, you can see outdoor storage and a commercial yard, waste yard. To the south is Route 28, and beyond that is a residential zone with single-family dwellings. And then to the west is the interchange of Route 22 and 28 as well. So the site centered in the page in yellow, it's a triangular-shaped through lot consisting of 5.43 acres. It's currently two lots, and we are proposing a lot consolidation. It has frontages on Route 22 and Route 28, with 964 feet of frontage on Route 22 and 900 feet of frontage on Route 28. The front yard on Route 22 is quite different than what you typically see along highways for where it's positioned. It's 70 feet from the curb line along Route 22 to our property line, so it's quite a distance, which is unique for this property. And the property is also located within the C3 office and service zone. And moving on to the site itself, so Lot 1, this is the existing Lot 1 on the southern side of the lot. That consists of the Melox Farm Stand and also a single-family dwelling as well. Access to that farm stand, there's a driveway curb cut on Route 28, and there's a separate curb cut for the single-family dwelling. To the Lot 2, which is to the northern side of the property, that's the Tectonic Office Building that's vacant, has associated parking and other site improvements as well. This property has access both on Route 22. There's an 18-foot driveway, and then also on Route 28 as well. On the southeast corner of the property, there's an 18-foot curb cut to access the site and circulate around. The parking for the Tectonic Building is setback 41 and 1/2 feet from the property line, which would be existing nonconformity to the current parking setback requirements. And it also contains a freestanding sign that's actually within the right-of-way. So the ID sign for the Tectonic Building is within the right-of-way and not in the property. And some environmental features. We did submit environmental impact study as part of our application. We have also received freshwater wetlands LOI, letter of interpretation, presence, absence, stating that there is no wetlands on the property, and there's no transition areas that impact the property as well. There are, you know, wetlands and a stream tributary just outside the property, right along the western side, northwest property line for the existing Lot 1 along Route 22. There is quite a bit of grade change on site, so the high side of the site is the eastern side with the elevation around 150, and then it slopes pretty gradually, or a consistent grade change throughout the site to the western corner of the property. It's an elevation of 110, so there's about a 40-foot grade change on the property. With that, there are steep slopes as defined by the township ordinance. So 3% of the site, roughly 3% of the site, has steep slopes graded in 30% grade, and then 4% of the site is 20 to 30% grade, and then the remainder is less than that. So a good majority of the site, 93% of the site is less than 20% slopes.
Matches the total parcel size once we consolidate the lot. What would that come out to be?
It's 5.43 acres, 236,822 square feet.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to move on to what we're proposing, so I'm going to introduce my second exhibit. This is the site layout plan exhibit prepared by Bowler, dated March 20th, 2025. I'll mark this A2 with the date in the top right corner. Okay, so north is to the top of the page for your reference. It's the same orientation as the last A1 exhibit. So this is a colorized rendering of our site plan that was submitted as part of our application, with the landscaping superimposed on the site plan. So we are proposing a self-storage building, which does require a use variance, as is nonpermitted within the zone. The building itself is -- has a gross floor area of 120,570 square feet, is three stories tall, is 40,190 square feet per floor. We are compliant with building height. The allowable building height for the site is 45 feet, which is measured from the proposed grades of the site, where we are providing a building height of 36.54 feet. We are also compliant with the lot coverage requirement, where we're proposing 36.2% lot coverage, which is all the proposed impervious areas on the site, where 51.3% is permitted in the zone when you adjust for the steep slopes requirements. We are increasing the impervious area for the site by 1.3 acres when compared to existing conditions, but I'll get more into that when I talk about the stormwater for the site. So we are compliant with the building height and the improved lot coverage, but we are requesting a variance for FAR, where we're proposing a FAR ratio of 0.6, where 0.26 is permitted with the slope adjustments for the site. The building is setback 101.5 feet from the Route 28 frontage on the south side of the property, which is compliant setback from Route 28. We are requesting a variance for the Route 22 setback, where we're providing 100-foot setback from Route 22, where 200 feet is required from the property line. The reason why we're proposing a variance for this is we wanted to -- or from Route 22 frontages, we wanted to position the building as far away from the residents across from Route 28. So we wanted to honor, you know, and respect that buffer and the setback from that Route 28 frontage. And with our proposed use, there's no outside storage of any kind, including cars, boats, or construction material. It's part of our project. So to access the site, we are proposing a driveway on the Route 22 frontage. The location is relatively the same as what's there in existing conditions, but we are widening the driveway through. In the existing condition, it was 18 feet, and proposed, it's 30 feet, and that's allow us to have a right-in, right-out driveway and adequate width along the driveway through. We're not proposing a driveway that allows customers or employees to access the site from Route 28. We did receive a comment from the fire department requesting an emergency access driveway from the Route 28 frontage, so that's something we're still working through. We did just receive that comment.
Yeah, that's something we've done, gates, we've done chains, and that's something, you know, maybe you can work with Bill Burr and Catherine about coming up with something. But I'd like something camouflage as much as possible, and, you know, I like what you said about trying to respect the neighborhood, you know, on the other side of the blue line to the south here.
Sure. Yes, so we'll probably propose some kind of grass paver with a baller and chain that can be accessed by the fire department in case of an emergency. So what's--
Can I ask you a question, please? Sorry to interrupt. The width of the driveway from Route 22, you have both ingress and egress. Were they designed for cars only, to accommodate any kind of light trucks or tractor trailers, or just the fire department equipment turning around? Can you describe how you designed that?
Sure. So as part of our site plan submission, we did have truck diagrams, sheet C302, 303. The site is designed for an SU30 box truck, which is a typical box truck that we would expect passengers or customers to use for the site. If that'd be the largest customer vehicle, we would expect. The fire truck, the site has been designed for fire truck circulation. We do need to revise our fire truck template to match what the township provided. The overall dimensions of the truck are very similar to what we had provided, but the template's slightly different. I believe the fire truck's 48 feet long, and we had a 47-foot-long fire truck, so I don't anticipate any impacts to what were our site layout from a truck turning perspective, but the site is fully designed for the Route 22 driveway for box trucks, trash trucks, and a fire truck as well.
Do you anticipate that most of your clients will be just bringing things in their cars or SUVs or pickup trucks, or do you anticipate them renting a truck as you were describing? I'm kind of not sure as to how your thinking is going off.
Sure. I can get into that. I was about to get into how the site functions and where they can access.
Okay. Thank you.
So entering, once you enter the site with the driveway on Route 22, there's a long driveway throat that connects to the top right corner, the northeast corner of the site, where there are a few parking spaces. The northeast corner of the building, that's where the office is, so if you're a new customer, you would park in the first few parking stalls directly across from the office, outside the security gates, and then you can access the office if you did not have a unit. Once you become a customer or renting a unit, you would access the site the same way, but there's two gates along the -- ones along the eastern facade and ones along the western facade. So the site does have one-way circulation in a clockwise direction. The drive aisles are 24 feet wide, so there are a couple different options for a customer to, you know, unload their stuff or load their car or trucks. So starting, I guess, closest to the office, there's an elevator door located where my mouse is, approximately in the middle of the eastern facade of the building. So customers can pick, you know, park their cars in the parking space and access that door on the eastern facade, and then use the elevator to get to their unit, or they can continue driving in a clockwise direction around the building, where there's some additional parking on the western side of the site, and there's a customer entrance on the western facade, where they can use an elevator over there as well. And then lastly, they could also use two loading spaces that are covered within the building, so located on the northern facade of the building, there's a garage area with two garage roll-up doors that a customer could back into with a box truck, a truck, a car, whatever they're driving, and unload their belongings.
Matt, all those doors you mentioned, that's all key code access?
Correct.
And as far as the gate operation's concerned, that gate is closed 24/7, both gates, correct?
Correct. You have to have an access PIN to get through the gates.
And as far -- I think there was a comment regarding fire department access in times of emergency. To my understanding, we would be giving the fire department a master code, so when they came to the site, they would have access and be able to open those gates and access the building. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. As far as you had talked about door circulation, there are drive-up units on both the northeast and south side of the building?
Yes, that is correct. So there are roll-up units along the exterior of the building that are available for, you know, customers on the first floor. And there's a five-foot striped area outside those exterior units to allow additional room for customers. And then, you know, the drive aisle--
As far as you had talked about door circulation, there are drive-up units on both the north, east, and south side of the building?
Yes, that is correct. So there are roll-up units along the exterior of the building that are available for, you know, customers on the first floor. And there's a five-foot striped area outside those exterior units to allow additional room for customers. And then, you know, the drive aisle is a minimum 24 feet wide with the, you know, five-foot striping, so there's ample room for a car to sit there outside their roll-up door and another car to drive by as well.
Mr. Capizzi, so your engineer clearly is very knowledgeable on engineering, but I'm curious, who is the operator and where are these things coming from that, you know, they're going to have key codes? Is this going to be a national operator? Is it going to be a local?
We will have testimony on that, Mr. Chairman, as far as the nature of the operator.
Okay, so he's giving information to the board based on someone else that you're going to present to us that we can cross-examine?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do you want to, you know, give us a spoiler? Is this a national entity?
I don't believe a end user has been selected yet, but we're, this is programming that will be part of the building regardless of who will be the operator?
So that makes me nervous. So everything that we've said here, a national operator could do things differently. This board heard a case very recently on Boslar and 22, where, you know, they had a tenant in mind that had a track record, and, you know, the track record goes to safety, and the safety is absolutely the first thing that I think of. I'm only one vote, but that's the first thing I think of in every case, safety with wastewater, safety with management, safety with access, safety with the neighbors. So, you know, how do we know that this operator, to be D, you know, to be selected, is going to, you know, have the same things that you're testifying here in, as part of their policy and procedure?
It'll be a requirement, Mr. Chairman.
So everything that we're saying, we're just going to have as a stipulation?
Correct. It'll be, it'll be a condition of approval that the building will function in the manner...
Our board attorney's going to be very busy, and we're going to, you know, have a lot of conditions there.
I don't intend to give him extra work, but I certainly can itemize the operational testimony.
Charges by the word, so...
And provide that to be attached as an exhibit to the resolution.
All right. Just, so you said there's going to be someone that's going to testify to this, but you don't have anyone selected, so you're hoping between now and the next week?
Ex-person in the self-storage industry that are familiar with how self-storage facilities operate, what their hours are, what their customer needs are, what their typical traffic demands are, those sorts of things, Mr. Chairman.
So is it safe to say right now, this is kind of a development project with eventually a tenant in mind, or this project would be sold to a national operator? What do you think?
The ownership structure of the ultimate development has not yet been decided, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
What is common practice, and maybe, you know, boards don't get involved in looking behind the curtain, but a lot of times developers build out of site and they enter into a license agreement with a particular entity.
Then I guess this board definitely gets behind the curtain, because I want to make sure that this neighborhood is safe, that there's not materials that are ever going to get in here that are going to hurt anyone in this neighborhood.
Again, any of the extra space facility you have in the township today could be gone tomorrow. There's no guarantee...
Say that again?
Yes, the banner on which your current extra space is operating is not required to be in place in perpetuity. So the protections provided to the municipality come by way of restrictions placed in your resolution, not by way of the branding on the building. The police power the board has is being able to enforce conditions in a resolution regardless of the operator. So if extra space decided that this market was not for them...
Who's extra space?
I'm sorry?
Who's extra space?
It's a national operator.
You just said you didn't have a national operator.
No, I'm familiar with extra space being within the township.
Gotcha.
They have an existing facility in your township.
We have a lot of storage operators in Bridgewater. You know that, right?
I'm not debating that, sir. I'm just making a reference that the banner on which a facility operates is not tied to the approval.
And you understand where my questioning is coming from. We want to make sure that whoever is operating this not only abides by the testimony of your engineer, who's not an expert in running a storage facility, but also has certain policies and procedures that make Bridgewater safe.
Sir, I think the fact that safety is a concern has already been incorporated into...
It's not a concern, it's the...
No, I'm, Mr. Chairman...
That's what we're here.
From the applicant's perspective, it's a concern, and those elements have already been incorporated into the site design.
But you just said your applicant is a developer who's going to sell this project off, so I want to make sure...
Did not say that, Mr. Chairman. I said the ownership structure has yet to be determined.
Okay, so the reason that I even interrupted your engineer was because he's not an expert in operating storage facilities.
We can move on.
We're going to condition all of his answers, because he's not an expert. We're going to get them into the, into the record, and when and if a resolution is passed, we're going to make sure that everything that he testifies forced on potentially a national operator. So that's something that you should let your developer know, that, you know, whoever takes this project over is going to have to abide by everything that this engineer has just put on the record.
We're, they're aware of that, and they're prepared to be bound by that.
Perfect, thank you.
And again, I apologize, it was not my intention to have Mr. Kunsman talk about operations. There was a question about how the facility may function. We can certainly move on from that.
No, you can do, it's your case. You got 90 minutes, well, you got a few minutes less now, but you use it as you wish. I'm not going to tell you how to do your case, you're an expert.
I'm just looking to be courteous to the board, Mr. Chairman, that's all. I appreciate that.
May I interrupt?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you know, engineer in his report, Mr. Burr, has, on item number three, he wants to know the description of the current and proposed use, hours of operation, and so on and so forth, like there are like eight or nine items that he's asking questions, and that really pertains to how you will operate the entire facility once it's constructed. You will need those answers, because our engineer already has those questions in his report.
Mr. Kunsman's testimony is accurate as to the nature in which the facility will operate, and the applicant is prepared to be bound by those stipulations.
Yeah, like the deliveries, types of deliveries, and so on and so forth, you know...
Right, and again, this conversation is not new, because if I was coming before you with a designated operator, the stipulations would have to be part of the record regardless. So whether it was a well-known chain or otherwise, the manner in which the facility is going to operate is part and parcel of the discussion with the board and the public. So I think the fact that we have yet to determine who will wave its banner on the building doesn't change the conversation relative to the operational discussion.
Yeah, and, you know, Mr. Capizzi, the prior storage facility that this board approved somewhat recently has a lot of operational conditions in the resolution itself, which I'm happy to share with you. You can see what we did last time.
Thank you.
Yeah, they also brought their CEO, and the board was able to pull up different facilities all around New Jersey. I know Mr. Kulak had done some extensive research on that. You know, those are things where, you know, it does make it easier for the board to visualize operations and to get a feel for their track record and their safety record, so...
Understood, Mr. Chairman. Again, I appreciate the input from the board, and now understanding the importance of that issue to the board, perhaps we, by the time I come back before you, we will have a designated operator and a similar person to give testimony.
Thank you very much. So just moving on to the parking, we are requesting a variance for parking within the front yard, where 57.6-foot setback is provided and 100 feet is required, and that is occurring in the four parking spaces on the northern side of the building to Route But we wanted to provide, you know, ample parking around the facility, especially across from the two garage loading areas. So in the case that both these garage units were being used, there was, you know, additional parking outside of those garages.
In order to determine your ample parking, based on, as you're describing it now, did you do it as a function of a ratio between the total number of storage units and what you might perceive then to be the usage, and therefore extrapolate from that the parking? And if so, could you share with us the rationale that you use, or the mathematical formula that you use to derive the parking spaces based on those criteria that I mentioned?
So we do have a traffic consultant that can provide testimony, but they base the parking based off IT standards, and that's based off square footage of a building and not the number of units. But they also, our traffic consultant will get more in detail on this, I'm just giving you this little sneak peek, they also look at other sites that they have designed as well to make sure it's consistent, so...
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're suggesting we wait for the traffic engineer to share that information with us?
Yes.
Because you don't know it, or it's just not your area of expertise?
I have the information, but it's not my area of expertise.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, the township doesn't have a particular parking standard for self-storage facilities, so the ordinance permits us to utilize another recognized authority, which was the Institute for Traffic Engineers Manual that our traffic engineer referenced in preparing his report. And then that parking requirement was provided to our civil engineer who put that on his bulk table. So I believe the requirement is 18 or so spaces, and we are providing 21, and the utilization of the IT is a recognized standard. I understand is a recognized method within the township, and that was the material that was reviewed by both your board engineer and planner, but we do have a separate witness to talk about the traffic study in detail.
So I can get the information I'm looking for from the traffic engineer?
Yes, sir.
So moving on to deliveries of the site, so there, we do expect minor, small deliveries of, you know, FedEx trucks, UPS, and that's just for some office supplies. The office typically sells, you know, boxes, tape, stuff like that, so as a convenience to the customer. So the site is designed as well for those small deliveries. And then for loading spaces required, so the township code requires four loading spaces for this size building, but we're only proposing two within the garage, so that does require a variance. The loading space requirement from the township is very broad from the types of uses. It covers almost all commercial, industrial uses, so it's not specific to self-storage, so that's why we're requesting the variance for that. And also the size of loading space, we are requesting a variance for the length of the loading space required, since we're proposing a 39.5-foot-long loading space. And again, that loading space length is large enough for the largest vehicle that we'll anticipate on this site, the SU-30 box truck.
And if there's a truck parked in the loading dock, it won't block the access around the site?
No, because the largest truck is an SU-30 that's designed for the site, and SU-30 is a box truck, single unit, 30 foot long.
How wide is that street, so to speak?
It's 24 feet plus five to 10 feet of striping in front of the garage door, so it's 34 feet in that area.
So it's 34 feet in that area?
Oh, sorry, 44 feet, sorry.
44 feet?
Yep.
Well, that's a big difference, if the truck is going to be 30-something feet.
Matthew, the truck would be pulling into the building, correct?
Yes, and we did submit as part of our site plan application, page C 303, we show that SU-30 box truck maneuvering into that garage unit, so we do show that the truck does work.
Comes off the road.
Correct, entirely within the building.
In the planner review letter as well, it does state that a variance may be required for the location of the loading space, those two loading spaces, since it's within a front yard of Route 22, and 200, you know, Route 22 has a 200-foot setback, so we would be requesting a variance for that if it's required. And, you know, those spaces are inside the building, and it's not like a large commercial building, or where they have a loading berth that's outside, so it's a little bit different how it functions.
Can you expand on that? Why you just didn't put it in the back facing 28, so to speak?
We didn't want the garage doors facing the residence, so we wanted it as far away as possible to, because that's where we anticipate most users going, because if it rains, they're covered, right? So that would limit, you know, the potential for that.
All right, thank you.
On the delivery, or the truck that you're using as part of your turning analysis, it's an SU-30. How did you come to that selection of a design vehicle?
It's very typical in this, for self-storage, and, you know, you're not going to see a tractor trailer coming to the site, that's what you're probably concerned about, right? Is a tractor trailer coming to the site. Before someone rents a unit, they're not, they're not just going to show up with a huge tractor trailer before renting a unit, so they know how large the unit is, and then, you know, typically, it's part of the, you know, resolution that we were speaking of before, that it would limit that. So an SU-30 is what we typically see for this facility, and we've designed numerous self-storage facilities across the state.
Do you know the largest type of vehicle someone can rent and still use a standard driver's license?
I, I'm not sure what, I'm sure our traffic engineer can buy the information, but I don't know.
Thank you.
What's the range of sizes of each of the units, from the smallest to the largest?
Our architect is here this evening, sir, and he'll have that information. As far as the...
For me, at least, it's important to know, because you decided that a box truck would be the largest truck that would go through there, but if someone is selling their home and their house isn't ready, they may have a moving truck full of furniture they may want to store, so that's why I'm asking, what's the largest unit if you're building this thing, and you are the architect, correct?
No, I'm not.
He's the civil engineer.
Yes.
So you designed this?
I did not design the interior of the building.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I have a question. The property has only one entrance from Route 22. Why is the one that is from Route 28 taken out? I mean, there was an existing entrance from Route 28 into the property. Why is it taken out?
We wanted to, you know, maximize the buffer between the residents, and having, you know, a 24, 30-foot curb cut from Route 28 would just, you know, provide less buffer between the residents, so that was the main reason why we didn't provide another driveway on Route 28.
It's such a big property, should have access from two different locations. That's the way I look at it, so...
From understanding some of the history of the site and some other applications that preceded us, we understood that maintaining a no-access off of 28 was something to be encouraged, which is why the site was laid out this way, so as to try to limit, I shouldn't say limit, to preclude vehicle activity entering and exiting the site on 28, and to preserve the buffer that's there and to enhance it.
Mr. Capizzi, was that the Quick Check site in 2014?
Yes, sir.
The application was before the zoning board?
Yes, sir.
There was quite a few people here upset about that rear entrance into 28, if I recall.
It'd still be...
And Mr. Capizzi, I think you mentioned earlier that there would only be an emergency accessway to Route 28, is that right?
That's correct.
By the fire marshal?
The fire official had requested that, and we're certainly happy to accommodate that.
So there would be that. Okay, let's move on.
One of the comments, I believe it was in the engineer's review letter, was about snow removal and providing additional testimony about that, so the site does have quite a big gray change, so we do have a retaining wall on the eastern side of the site, so, and we have quite a bit of vegetation, so around the perimeter of the parking lot and the drive aisles, so it does limit where we can store snow, snow storage. So wherever it can't be stored, that impacts landscaping or something like that, it would be hauled off the site. All right, so moving on to lighting, so we are providing LED light fixtures with 3,000 K temperature, which is appearance of a softer light, it's not the bright white, that's like a 5,000 Kelvin unit, so we're providing 3,000 Kelvin temperature. So along Route 28, we do not have any wall-mounted lights facing or along the Route 28 facade. We're trying to avoid... We're trying to avoid any indirect light that you can see. So that's why we provided some area lights that face the building and not Route 28. They also have house-side shields equipped with it. And there's zero foot candle spill at the property line on Route 28 as well. On along the Route 22 frontage, we are requesting a waiver for the light intensity of two-point-six-foot candles, which is occurring where our driveway throat intersects the property line. And that's because, like I was saying earlier, the property line's set back seventy feet approximately from the curb in Route 22. So we had to put a light fixture as close to that property line as possible to still have some amount of light at the curb opening on Route 22. So we're requesting a waiver from that requirement.
And what was your foot candle reading for the front?
Two-point-six-foot candles at that location where one-foot candle is allowed. And then when you get to the Route 22 curb opening, it's at zero-point-two-foot candles maximum, which is, also meets the NJDOT requirement for lighting. And then as far as reducing intensities during off-hours, we can come up with a plan to show what the, what lights have to remain on or off for security reasons and things like that to minimize the amount of light at night. Moving on to the dumpster or trash enclosure that we're providing.
Can I ask you a question about the lighting before we go to the dumpsters? You're not going to pull on twenty, you went over all that. The residents on 28, after, let's say, ten, eleven o'clock at night, will they have lights visible to them that will disrupt them?
There's house-side shields on the area lights, so they will not be able to see the actual light fixture. The light fixture is physically blocked with the shield from those area lights along the 28 property line. And then the foot candle values at the property line are zero along Route 28. And it's really behind, ten feet or so behind the curb line, that's where the zero-foot candle line is approximately. So they're not really, the residents on, across Route 28 shouldn't see those lights.
Shouldn't see or will not see. It's a big difference.
Those lights, they will not see.
You know, I think this is a point at which you can kind of tell us, how many trees are you cutting down off this property? And what's your plan to replace them? Because I'm not going to let you clear-cut this piece of property in a residential zone, in a transition zone, without replacing the vast majority of what you take out. So why don't you tell us what you're removing and what you're planning to put in? And you can speak in numbers for us.
Okay. Sure. So the total trees to be removed from the property, there are two-hundred-and-nine trees. Two-hundred, two-zero-nine, two-hundred-and-nine. Two-hundred-and-six onsite and then three off-site.
What does that mean, off-site?
Within where the driveway is. So we had to get DOT to sign off on that.
So the two-hundred-and-nine is everything? That's the total?
Yeah, that's everything. So with that, the township code has replacement values. So it's not necessarily just you cut down two-hundred-and-nine trees, you provide two-hundred-and-nine trees, right? That's not the requirement. So the requirement is we would need to provide three-hundred-and-two trees for this project.
Which is good. So what's your plan?
So we are proposing currently a hundred-and-seventy-one trees.
Which is less than three-hundred-and-two.
That is correct. So that's a hundred-and-thirty-one trees deficit currently. I do see room for improvement on that number. I don't believe I'll be able to have a zero-tree deficit. But there are areas on the site, like on the western side of the site, there's a grass area.
You couldn't have possibly researched this board and heard any of what we did in the last storage case and think I was going to, you know, be happy about a deficit. I don't want any deficit. In fact, I want a surplus. You should do four-hundred-and-two trees. This is a freaking farm stand. So what can you do here? You know, you've got a room full of people. Clearly, you haven't met with them. Have you met with them?
We have not, sir.
So you come in here, you're taking out two-hundred-and-nine trees, Bridgewater's making you put three-hundred-and-two, and you're fifty percent deficient. Come on. Why can't we do four-hundred? Let's start there. Let's start our negotiation. Do I hear four-hundred?
We'll take a look at the plan, Mr. Chairman, and see what we can do to supplement the landscaping plan.
Mr. Fuze?
Yes.
One thing that I wanted to clarify, or ask, actually. The tree replacement plan told part of the story, but I'm not sure how many trees were surveyed on the site in total.
I didn't see a tree inventory in the submission.
No, and I will say I'll take part of the blame for that when we're doing completeness. There was a request to do a tree inventory by sample sizes. I don't remember what we ended up getting from them as part of completeness, but I know that it didn't end up, the tree inventory didn't end up on this sheet.
Okay.
So if they have that number, it may give also a little bit more of the story of how many trees exist versus how many are being removed. Because I don't think it's, two-hundred-and-nine is not the full amount of trees, there's more.
I don't know. The way I look at it as a resident, and I'm sure a lot of the people in this room look at it, is that they're losing a farm stand. You know, this is, you know, it's part of the charm of why you move to a neighborhood. And I think applicants need to be good neighbors. And I think, you know, they certainly have a right to do whatever they want. They own the property. But we would certainly like to see four-hundred-plus trees to at least keep the aesthetic. You know, it was a farm stand. Now is not the time for questions. I'm sorry. We've got to keep to a format or, you know, this does become a record if this does go to court. So, you know, to let you ask questions now would disrupt that. So I'll make sure that you get to ask your questions in a little while. So this sounds like something you guys want to work on and come back to us?
On this particular item, yes.
Sounds good to me. And the only reason I bring it up is because Mr. had questions on the lighting and, you know, what your plantings are going to dictate what ends up with foot candles that spill out potentially into Route 28. So I'm glad you're going to work on it.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do understand the importance of the farm stand. I actually grew up on Huntley Way, which is three-quarters a mile from this area. So I do know the site very well.
All right, that's good to hear.
So I understand your concern. So we'll look into the tree plan. I do have a conservation plan, but I went to verify it meets all the requirements from the town.
You were touching on the dumpster area?
Sure. So, yes, we do have a trash enclosure located on the eastern side of the site. It's relatively close to the office as well. That dumpster area is to be used by the operator only and the employees. It's not meant for the, you know, renters of units to utilize that trash enclosure. And it can be locked if necessary.
Sounds like a stipulation by an operator. While you're discussing the enclosure, can we talk about the fence and the retaining walls sort of in that sort of same area? Just go through the height of the retaining wall in that back, the southern side. And then I see a six-foot brown fence. Just give us an overview on that. I don't want to ask you fifty questions about it, rather you just can talk to it, maybe.
Yes, so I'm going to pull up, I'm pulling up my grading plan to get those exact numbers for you. But the eastern side of the site is, we're cutting into that area. And then the western side of the site, we are, you know, filling that area. And that's because of the existing soil on site. There's a lot of, you know, bedrock, ripable shale, things of that nature. So it's very difficult to construct and cut the site and very expensive as well.
I understand, I understand. But, so just answer my question, on the eastern side, then, how tall, how far, how high is that retaining wall? Is that an architect question?
I have it, I'm just verifying.
No, no, no pressure, I just want...
It's approximately five feet tall, and there's a six-foot fence on top of it.
Right. Okay, so that's the eastern side. And then as we go clockwise coming around the southern, where are we at there? Because obviously, that's like a neighborhood. I mean, you know, we don't want...
There is no retaining wall. There's a retaining wall in the southeast portion of the property. And then where there's a bend in the building?
Yeah, that's...
That's where the retaining wall essentially ends on the southern side.
So is it five feet there with the six-foot fence there, too?
Correct.
Where's the visible face of the wall, Matthew?
The wall would face into the property, facing the building.
So the residential corridor on 28 only sees the fence, they don't see any wall element, correct?
Correct.
Is that whole true also for the wall along the east?
Yes, yes.
You picked the brown fence, I assume, to blend in with the landscape and all that. What about, we talked about lighting. What about light, wall-mounted lighting and that? I mean, there must be some wall-mounted lighting back there, right?
Flip into my lighting plan to review. It's not very easily seen on, exhibit on the screen. So the lights on the eastern facade, there are wall-mounted lights on the building. So there's no area lights on the eastern facade?
So is it safe to say because the fence is six feet tall and then there's a five-foot drop, that perhaps they could be below the eye line of the fence? Or because it's three stories? I mean, I can't imagine you have lighting up...
No, the lighting, the wall-mounted lights in that area are twenty feet high.
Twenty feet high. Okay, so they probably, would you say then they would be above the fence? Because if it's five plus six...
Yes.
Okay. My last question. On the image that you have on the screen that we can all see, you've got landscaping shown in green. And then a layer beneath that is obviously the existing landscaping. The layer that's beneath that, that is all remaining, correct?
Correct. Along the Route 28 frontage, between the building, there's one row of evergreen trees proposed. And then beyond that, it's mostly existing vegetation.
So where your cursor is right now, that is remaining?
Correct.
As you move westward, that's all remaining?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does six-foot fence on top of a five-foot retaining wall trigger a variance? Rich caught that. I can't take credit. All right.
Like the other one, too. The other self-storage had something similar.
All right, just note that.
I have some relevant question. Are you going to have any testimony on the grading and any earthwork that you're doing with the site? Or should I ask my questions at that now?
You can ask.
Sure. How much fill are you bringing in on this site?
I don't have an exact quantity. I did not provide that or perform that calculation, but I can tell you some grades. So we are increasing grade in the building footprint by an average of approximately five-point-seven feet. That, because the site does slope quite a bit. So on one side, you might be cutting, but on the western side, you're filling.
Okay. How much are you cutting on the eastern side versus how much are you filling on the western side?
I believe we're cutting anywhere from one to two feet on the eastern side, because that's, once you get below that, that's where you're hanging rock. So we want to limit that.
Okay.
And then on the western side, we're filling ten to thirteen feet.
And then on the western side, how much higher would kind of your building grade level be relative to Route 28, kind of in that vicinity?
So where Bogart Drive is, it's approximately elevation one-twenty-seven in the intersection. And our finished floor is one-forty-five, so eighteen feet.
Okay, so the top of the building would be about, I think, it's almost forty feet, I think, right? So it would be about almost fifty feet height then?
If you're measuring from that point, yes.
Is there any way that this building could have been arranged such that it contoured closer to the natural grade out there?
If we lowered the grade of the building, then we're into shale and bedrock. And it's very difficult to construct in those conditions. So we wanted to minimize the amount that we're going into that. So that's why we proposed the finished floor elevation we did. Because you're ripping shale and hammering rock.
Right, if you kept it at one level...
As much as possible, so it's not, you know, a nuisance to the neighbors and stuff like that.
Okay.
Can you talk about the, I'm assuming this is a retention basin? Can you talk about a little?
Sure. So we did receive comments from the board engineer about our design. We, currently, we have an infiltration basin. So it would be a sand-bottomed basin. It would hold up to two feet of water that infiltrates into the ground. And then anything above that would go through the outlet structure. We did have a lot of geotechnical testing from, you know, historical throughout the site and then what the applicant has done, that did indicate that the infiltration could be feasible in this location. But we would need additional stormwater testing to verify that.
In the past, there've been discussions about fifty-year, a hundred-year floods. What would this accommodate?
This site's designed for the future hundred-year flood condition.
Thank you.
If I may, can we go back to the trash area for just a second? You mentioned it's only for the employees of the facility. If a tenant or a renter, rather, you know, a mouse gets in and chews through an umbrella, are they expected then they take their trash with them and bring it wherever else?
Generally, yes, you're supposed to take whoever's in your locker with you. It would be up to the operator of the facility and, you know, the manager on staff or the employee that's there.
Okay, so that's an operational decision, then?
Yes.
Okay.
There is no ability for a renter of a unit to dispose of their refuse on-site?
Are you going to be speaking to the overall stormwater management plan for this site or does that come later?
I can speak to that more.
Just have a quick question, though. Earlier in your testimony, you described that there were no wetlands or streams on-site, but there was one that was close by. Was that in the right-of-way between Route 22 and the property that we're discussing? Or where was that stream located?
Sure. To the northwest corner of the property, where my mouse is on the screen. It's not on-site, so it's between our property line and the Route 22 frontage. There is a stream that traverses in that area.
So it doesn't...
It makes a ninety-degree turn around the property line.
It actually goes around the property line? So it doesn't disperse any water onto the property itself? So it's still in the, I can't really see from the diagram, the right-of-way? The stream itself?
Correct. There is no floodplain mapped on this site.
Right. And you don't in any way affect that stream with your retention basin or your ability to manage stormwater?
No. So we are required to design the site to the NJDEP standards. We are a major development. We do deserve an acre, more than an acre of the site. So it does trigger the NJDEP regulations, which requires us to treat storms as small as the water quality storm, which is one-point-two-five inches, or as large as the future adjusted hundred-year storm. I don't have that number in front of me, but it's generally fifty percent larger than what's today, which is approximately twelve inches of rain. So the site is designed for that. So the site is designed for that to detain and release at a controlled rate, which meets the NJDEP standards.
So what I'm just concerned about, though, is that it does not affect, you won't be draining into that stream based on your design?
We are. Our discharge does go there, but in existing conditions, it goes to the same spot. Everything ultimately drains to that stream on the property, and that's what we're proposing. We cannot.
So it's not on the property or it is on the property?
It is not on the property, but we have an outlet on our site that ultimately gets to that stream.
Okay. And where does that stream terminate or where does it, to where does it travel? Does it go across the road?
Yes. It goes underneath Route 22 and then also under Route 28.
And does it pop out anywhere?
I don't know exactly. I didn't study the stream beyond.
But water from your site is going into that stream?
Yes.
Is water from the eastern side of your property where there's some sort of, I don't know how to describe the businesses operating there. I see some vacant, I see some trucks and some equipment and so on. They're higher than you are. Are they, does water drain from their property onto yours?
Yes, a portion. And we have designed our site to accommodate that. We have swales that go around the top of the retaining wall and then piped to the, ultimately to where we're discharging on the site.
Was there any way to determine the quality of the water? Because that's kind of an industrial-like site. There are a lot of fuels and things like that. Does that somehow drain onto your property and then end up in that stream?
I don't have that information. I'm sure the seller or the buyer had Phase One performed for the projects.
We can only speak to our own site, but he's asking about off-site conditions.
Well, I'm asking how that would impact your site, though. In other words, if something is coming off-site onto your property and then continues to follow your drainage and stormwater management plan, then ultimately ends up in that stream. I'm not sure who I'm supposed to be pointing fingers at or how to provide a level of safety to that stream. But I wondered if there was any testing done to testing the water that's coming off that site onto yours, then ultimately into the stream.
We've done groundwater testing on our own site?
Yes.
But nothing off-site. As far as the drainage area, Matt, are you redirecting any of the drainage area under the proposed condition?
The proposed condition would match what's there existing.
Explain that for me. So is water sheet flowing today, it'll continue in that pattern tomorrow?
Correct.
As far as the rate of runoff into the stream off-site, on existing versus proposed, can you explain the change in condition?
Sure. We are reducing flows by a minimum of 50% for a two-year storm event. 70, or 25% for a 10-year storm event, or sorry, yeah, 10-year storm event. And then reducing by 20% for 100-year storm event.
The amount of, the rate at which water flows off the site under the proposed condition, despite all the additional imperatives, coverage surfaces, excuse me, is less under the proposed condition than existing?
Yes.
So as far as the concern potentially of overburdening that downhill stream, your drainage design actually reduces the burden on that stream. Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And I'm just, still have an open question in my mind about any contaminated materials being drained onto your site and how you would determine that. So you may not have that information now, but it's something I would like to hear about.
It would be, I don't see, listen, we can, I'm certainly happy to be creative to see how we can capture that data. Perhaps an alternative is to explore with your engineer about how to keep that naturally-occurring runoff from coming onto our site and perhaps directing it elsewhere. Maybe a means of trying to address that concern, but we'll see what we can do to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kapizzi, did the Phase One raise that as a concern?
My recollection is that it did not.
If you can just check that, too, for the next meeting?
Will do.
On your detention basin you have there on the west side, what level storm would you expect water to come over the overflow area?
It's designed for, you know, SCD or Soil Conservation District standards. But that's there as an emergency spillway. So that's if everything fails on-site. But on the average storm, for a 100-year storm, you would not see water going over that spillway unless the basin fails. So it's a safety mechanism in the event that it did not work. Which, we had to model that there's no infiltration in the ground, orifices are turned off and things like that. So we have designed that spillway for compliance.
Okay. And then in an emergency case where there is water coming over that spillway, where is the water going?
It would go into the stream along the property frontage, similar to where a normal storm would go.
And would there be any residents kind of in that path?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I think the only other thing I wanted to touch upon was utilities. So we are providing gas service to the project. That was a comment in the review letter as well from your board engineer. And we can come up with another solution to avoid cutting into the tree line, as in the comment. We can probably relocate it closer to where the water service is on the eastern facade. So we would maintain a very similar disturbance in that area. And then we are providing sanitary sewer connection for the proposed building, which we did receive comments for, we can accommodate for as well. And we do have electric service and a water connection. Well, just circling back on the landscaping, I did go back to that. So I know we're going to be changing our proposed trees for the site by just covering some additional requirements. So we currently do not have any foundation plantings around the perimeter of the building. That's because there are, you know, roll-up doors in that area. So it's not feasible for this building. But we are providing, you know, pretty significant amount of buffer around the perimeter of the project and along with the fence as well.
But less than what's required by Bridgewater zoning ordinance, correct?
And then the other requirement, we'll come back and adjust for, for the type of trees that are planted in the buffer. So we'll revise that and we'll have more information at the next hearing. And I believe that's everything I had.
Matt, as far as Mr. Burr's letter of March 20th this year, have you had an opportunity to review that?
Yes, I have.
I believe your testimony addressed the majority of the comments, but if there are any open technical comments, your office can address them by way of any necessary plan revision?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're going to assume anything that wasn't touched on, you're going to be in acceptance of in terms of the March 20th, 25th engineer report.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Open it up to the board for questions, please.
I have one question. Southern portion of the property, the wall of the building, can you just tell me the distance from the wall to the closest residential home? I guess on the opposite side of Route 28.
That's the wall of the building, sir?
Wall of the building, yes.
I'm just pulling out the actual plan. Measure that. Because I don't have the home on the. Do you have an aerial that I can measure from?
That's the same aerial we had previously marked as A1?
Yes, it is. So this is, this would be Exhibit A1. So the closest resident would likely be Lot 34, which is at the corner of Bogart Drive. From our property line to that resident, it's approximately 100 feet. And then our building is set back 100 feet from our property line, so approximately 200
So 200 feet total from building to building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions in a few different topic areas, so I'll try and keep the questions grouped together. First, with the landscaping plan, I know you're going to be updating it. Based on the, what you mentioned about the fire department comments about emergency access, if that is to Route 28, there, some of your proposed likely, your landscaping will likely have to be moved. So just keep that in mind and try and keep that tree replacement up and continue to go up based on the chairman's feedback. I will also mention that if any additional landscaping is proposed in the existing tree buffer that's not being disturbed, to have your landscape architect or arborist make sure that those trees are not disturbed or it's carefully chosen what species are grouped together if they're going to supplement the existing tree buffer back there. As far as the loading space inside the building, you'd mentioned that there are parking spaces right behind it. I did look at the turning template. I know that there was some conversation about the truck that was used for that turning template and what may or may not enter the site depending on who's moving in or who's driving that truck. But I will say that if there is someone who's not experienced in driving a truck and trying to back it up into the building based on how the truck turning template showed, I think that those parking spaces there are probably not a great idea. It presents another obstacle for maybe an inexperienced driver. So I don't know if having them right in front of the loading space is a great idea. If someone actually is parked there, you might, it may make it more difficult to back into the building or just maneuver the truck in general for someone who's trying to pull into that building spot. The doors at grade, I know there's no operator designated right now. We don't know, you know, what the branding is. But, you know, that's not very typical of modern self-storage buildings. I understand the purpose. A lot of older self-storage buildings have roll-up doors. And something, you know, that I've seen from experience in some of those older self-storage facilities is that you have not only people that are storing their things, but maybe contractors or small businesses that are storing materials there or appliances or things like that. How are those generally regulated? Again, not knowing the operator, how is it regulated to, that someone will not be storing some hazardous material or something that might be, you know, seen as a hazard to the fire department?
It's police by way of their lease and the on-site security camera system.
Okay, so something will be enforced?
Correct.
There'll be a manner to enforce it?
Yes.
Thank you. As far as those roll-up doors, I think I put it in my review memo. But how and where will those cars park as they pull up to their individual doors?
Yes, they would park parallel to the doors along the perimeter. There is, you know, a five-foot striped area along all the sides of the building. It'll allow for extra space. Additionally, there's a 24-foot one-way drive aisle. So if they did block a portion of the drive aisle, another car or truck could, would be able to maneuver around them. Additionally, the person that's parked their car or truck that's using those exterior units would be in their unit. So if there was a conflict, the manager of the facility or the person that can't get around that car would, you know, kind of approach that person.
Okay, thank you. And then one last thing about the loading spaces. Again, no operator, but what's the, how is it proposed that those loading doors to access the loading spaces would be operated and by a normal user?
There is a keypad outside of the building or outside of the doors, which a customer would have to be able to access. And then they would also automatically shut if, in the event that the customer left that door open. So over a certain amount of time, there's a sensor and it would shut the garage door.
And obviously, it would have a sensor that would, if something was blocking it, it would not continue closing, right?
Yes.
And that code that you mentioned, is that a one-time code that they'd have to get from the office? Or is that something that every single tenant that would have access to all the time?
Everyone's assigned their own specific code.
But they wouldn't have to get it every time that they wanted to use the loading dock, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else for this witness right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few questions. So as far as easements or restrictions or any other encumbrances on the property, is there anything that the board needs to?
There's nothing that's impacting our project.
Nothing that would impact this development?
Correct.
The environmental constraint or constraints, the wetlands that you spoke about, I think you mentioned that you have a presence-absence LOI for Lot 1, correct?
Correct.
That is still valid?
Yes.
But Lot 1 is only the westerly portion of this property? So have you guys taken a look at Lot 2, which I do think includes, I know it's the upland area, but it still includes part of the developed area? Have you taken a look at that area as well?
We haven't submitted an LOI for that piece of property because like you're stating it is the upland. We have reviewed, you know, topography. We also had our environmental consultant, Eco Sciences, prepare environmental impact statement, which touches upon some of those items. But no, we haven't pursued the NJDEP for that.
Did, do you know if Eco Sciences actually physically looked at that area? And if they didn't, will they, perhaps in advance of the next meeting? Just to make sure that it's clear?
Yes. We can, we can do a site walk to make sure we dot our i's.
Okay. So we heard a little bit of testimony about steep slopes on the property. I'm trying to get to the sheet. And you have Sheet C304, which shows a number of different slope areas ranging from, I think, 10 to 30%. There are some 30% plus slopes on the property. Will they be impacted by the development?
Yes.
And has a variance been requested for that, do you know?
It hasn't. We will request variance. I would verify.
And I guess my follow-up to that, in lieu of a variance request, is there any way to avoid some of those disturbances? And the answer may be no.
We can look into that. It's a very minimal area. It's, of the, the whole total of the site's seven, almost 7,000 square feet, where, you know, the site's 236,000 square feet. So it's a very small percentage. And we can fine-tune some, the way we calculate the, those slopes to make sure we're not impacting them.
And do you know if those are natural slopes or were they created potentially?
They look like they're around the existing tectonic building. I would verify that. But that's where it looks like it's happening. And there might be walls or, you know, small features that are creating that in our surface that calculates that, those slope percentages.
Okay. We heard a number of questions about the overhead doors, the access to the doors, the interior loading zones or loading spaces. And I think the testimony was an SU30 vehicle can access those interior spaces, correct?
Yes.
If, if somebody in any of the other exterior roll-up door units wanted to access their unit with a box truck, was your testimony that they would park parallel with the building? They would not back into one of the other exterior? They would not back into one of the other exterior units? I know they're not going to back into it, but back up to it?
Yes.
How would that function?
They would park parallel to the building, so they wouldn't be pulling into the units.
Okay. And in the event that somebody did back up and they blocked the drive aisle, I guess your testimony was the onsite manager would be alerted?
Yes.
Somebody couldn't get around that truck?
Yes.
Okay. The signage that's proposed, I don't know if you got into specific testimony or if that's going to be the architect, but did I hear that the signage proposal, other than the location of the Route 22 sign, complies with the ordinance requirements from a sizing perspective?
Yes, I actually did not testify to that, so thank you.
I thought I heard you say very briefly...
The existing sign is within the right-of-way for a tectonic building, but we are requesting a signed setback variance of, I believe it's five feet from the property line. Again, that's due to the site property line being set back 70 feet from the curb line of Route 22. So that's why we're proposing that location.
But there is no sign along the Route 28 corridor, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
But Bill, your question is as to the size of the sign, too? Is that compliant?
My initial question was, do the proposed signs comply with the ordinance?
Right.
And the follow-up was to confirm that there was no sign along 28.
Right, so is that confirmed?
Yes.
Size, okay.
The emergency access off of Route 28 that the fire official requested, that location would... I know you still have to engineer it, but that location by and large would coincide with where the existing driveway is? Is that fair?
We're going to have to look into it a little bit more. The current site plan, I envision going where the bend in the building is and along that rear facade. That's where the grading works a little bit better. Because we do have a five-foot approximately retaining wall in that corner where the existing driveway is. So to get those grades to work, we might be able to, but I would look into it more.
Okay. That was my question, is have you looked at it? And can you accommodate it with the current design without removing more trees? And it sounds like you're going to have to take a look at that in advance of the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. The next question, kind of a little bit drainage-related, mostly grading-related. I think it was board member Avesso that brought up the question about the grading along the Route 28 frontage of the property. And I'm taking a look, and the way this site has been graded out, we have about a 15-foot grade differential up to the driveway. And then you're going to have a little less than a 40-foot tall building on top of that plateau. So from somebody on Route 28 heading, I guess it would be eastbound towards Somerville Circle, you're going to see quite a large building. And I know in the architectural plans, there are some cross-sections that I don't really think fairly represent what you're going to see heading south on 28. And I know there was a question of can you lower the building at all? And your testimony was, well, you had bedrock out there. But I would suggest you take a look at the geotechnical report because it looks like you have... You don't have bedrock in some locations until 10 or 11 feet deep. And I think if you could lower the building and smooth out some of the grading, perhaps take a look at the detention basin orientation and shape, you might have an opportunity to save some of the trees that you're proposing to take down. So it would be a worthwhile exercise to see if there's any flexibility with how this has been situated and graded out, if that makes sense.
Yes, and it's something we can work together on as well.
Okay. And same thing, from a drainage perspective, if that basin can be turned or realigned, perhaps instead of being so wide, cutting across the width of the property with the berm, maybe there's a way to save on some of the tree removal and still allow for an enhancement of the buffer.
Yeah, that's definitely a great suggestion because the northwest portion of the property is grass, so we can definitely save some trees by rotating the basin.
Okay. And just to be clear, the basin that's currently proposed will capture, perhaps with the exception of a small area of the driveway leading to 22, the basin will capture all runoff from the improved portions of this property, right? The driveways, the building, everything will drain to that basin. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. I'm trying to think, Mr. Chairman, if I had anything else.
Oh, you're going to get another crack at them at the next meeting. So if anything else comes up, I do want to get... If it's okay with you, I want to get some questions from the members of the public. We may not be able to get them all in, but at least we can start. If anyone would like to come forward and ask questions on the engineering testimony you heard, now is the time. Yep, you just come up, give us your name and address, and then ask your question.
My name's Kristin Kovach. I live at 465 Route 28, about .4 miles from the site.
Could you spell your last name, please? Thank you.
Lower the microphone and speak directly.
My question is about the sound generated at this facility. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because where I live, there is a gargantuan building that was built behind my house. And you would think that it doesn't make any noise. But Mayor Mensch will tell you after having many conversations with me, it makes a lot of noise. And part of that is the trees. We had a lot of trees cut down behind our house for that building. It was great at first, and then they died. They were never replaced. And I still hear them dumping their dumpster every morning at 4:00 a.m. If you are going to have roll-up garage doors, I'm assuming that the residents are going to hear that. Snow plowing, you're going to hear that because I hear all of those things. So if you're going to take 300 trees or whatever the number was and not replace them, what are you going to do?
209.
Thank you. What are you going to do to eliminate the noise that all these people are going to hear every morning and every night when people are rolling up their doors or getting the driveway plowed? And are you planning on maintaining all those trees that you're going to plant? Because it's great to plant trees, but they're going to die. Things are going to happen to them. And my trees were never replaced. And Mayor Mensch did a lot of work to get that building to maintain my property, but they don't. So what is your intention to maintain the peace and quiet that we somewhat still have and to not disturb what little piece we have left? Thank you.
That would be best for our operator.
Okay.
It's not something that Matthew had testified to.
Right.
But we'll have testimony relative to how the site's going to function on a typical day-to-day.
Well, and I assume it's a 24-hour facility, so...
It is not.
It's not?
It'll be open from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And after 10 o'clock in the evening, none of the drive-up units, none of the internal units are accessible. And before 6:00 a.m., none of the internal or external units are accessible.
And with some of the other facilities I've seen, when you're looking at them from the road, the internal structures where the hallways are located, they're all lit. So will those be lit all night or only till 10 o'clock when the facility closes for access?
Really, when we have our architecture testimony, we'll talk about the building layout itself, but there isn't a view shed into the building.
Okay, so from the road, you can't actually see in those lit aisles, like some of the other places?
There's a small glass element along the left side of the building as you're facing it from Route 22.
Okay.
But other than that element relative to the office, the balance of the building is not translucent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Capizzi, on the point of maintaining the landscape buffer, would the applicant agree to a deed restriction to not only maintain but replace the buffer should it die?
We would.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hi there, just need your name and address, please.
Edie Hogan, I live at 319 Hanaway. It's probably about a half mile around from Route 28.
Great.
I'll be as quick as I can. Are you aware that a number of trees have already been down during the survey process and the soil trenching that has occurred on the northeast corner of the property?
We are aware that we... About two or so years ago, when we were doing a soils analysis, there was an excavator on site and maybe some trees were lost as a result of that excavation.
Yeah, backhoes have already been present. They've cut a swath through the wooded area, and this would change the mentioned tree count.
That was designed to remedy an underground oil tank that was left in place that had to be decommissioned.
So are you speaking about the petroleum runoff that was happening from the adjacent truck repair and storage business?
No, that's not what I'm referring to.
Okay, because that's been happening for many years.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
You'll have time to come and give statements about things?
Okay.
But right now, it's really just questions as to whatever the engineer testified to.
I have a question about snow.
And Mr. Capizzi, I think I'd rather the engineer answer the questions, please.
Okay.
I understand.
Yeah, and I didn't know who was going to answer the questions.
So that's why the engineer can answer what he testified to.
Okay. Before I get to the snow question, so you mentioned earlier there's no developer. Who's going to benefit from this as a resident? I want to know who wants this site?
He didn't testify to any of those things. Those are things that maybe you could ask the planner coming forward. Do you have a planner that's going to testify? Yeah, that sounds like something.
That's going to be at the next meeting? Okay.
And they may have an operator testify, it sounded like.
Okay. Yeah, I want to know who's benefiting from all this. And I'm sure all the other residents want to know as well. If, as stated, the excess snow will have to be hauled off-site, wouldn't that entail a backhoe and a dump truck, which is much larger than the SU-30 box truck that you referenced?
It's not larger.
Pardon?
It would not be larger.
Okay. All right, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, folks, let's do one more set of questions, and then we're going to call it a night on this case. Anyone else?
Hello there, my name's Chris Bowden. I live at 18 Bogart Drive.
Could we just get that in the microphone because people are watching at home?
Chris Bowden, I live at 18 Bogart Drive. So this is clearly...
Oh, your last name, please.
D.O.H.D.A.N. This is clearly very close to where I live, just a couple homes away from Route 28. And my question is, I haven't been able to see what I would call accurate, like a 3D rendering of how this building is going to sit because you talked about, I think, 13 feet of fill, give or take, is what you're going to take to level it out. And as you walk down the street and we're looking at this big monolith up here that's going to be now raised up 13 feet and built on top of that. And also, how is that going to affect the existing trees if there's that much fill going in there as well?
So our architect will have those perspectives that give you that representation you're asking for. From a tree disturbance, we do look at the drip zones and things like that to make sure grading activities aren't happening in those areas that would kill those trees. So we have looked into that, into our limited disturbance and provide that calculation. Now, we are going to be revising that plan. We can take a closer look.
Right.
And it sounds like we're going to be revising some of our grading as well, so it might limit that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, everyone. We're going to wrap this case up tonight. Nancy, maybe you can help us get a date to continue this hearing? Oh, yes, Mr. Sweeney.
We obviously have concern about the size of this building.
Sure.
I want to know what it's going to look like. And I can't tell that by looking at a draughtman's drawing of it. Why don't you come back with an artist's rendering of what that building is going to look like, especially to the people on the other side of Route 28?
We did provide an exhibit, sir, on Monday. And if we were going to...
Is it an artist's rendering of what it's going to look like?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So just dovetailing that one, Nancy's getting us a date. We did do another storage case. And that was an existing office building on Route 22 in Vosserler. And it was an old office building. And through the course of the hearing, we had a number of objectors. And not only did they improve stormwater, improve the layout, but they provided the board with very clear rendering, how this would look from different perspectives, from a southerly perspective, from a 22 eastern and western perspective. Again, this is your case to present. I'm just going to throw this out there as a suggestion. Review that case. I'll have Rich send you the resolution. We had a roomful of people that were stomping their feet. They were upset about it. And ultimately, at the end, we had no objectors. No one came to the meetings at the end because I felt like they were satisfied that it was improvement on the existing office building. Now, I don't know how we're going to improve the aesthetic from a farm stand to a storage facility, but please take a look at that case. It was very recent. This board heard it last year. We're going to send you the resolution in that case that has the stipulations and the conditions. And please take that to heart. And what Mr. Sweeney's asking is, we're volunteers. We're not experts, we're not draftsmen. When you show us a picture of how it's going to look from the neighbors, I guess this is a better view of what's going to be the impact on this neighborhood. And I think it's very important. And I know it's important to the people that took time to be here tonight. Thank you very much. So sorry, Nancy.
So we have May 13th. One residential application that would be first.
Okay.
Just a thought, though, for Mr. Capizzi, since there's extensive stormwater changes.
Yes.
The statutory requirement aside of 10 days, we would need a little bit more time on the resubmission in order to get it through. So just consider that before committing to 5/13.
That gives you about five weeks.
What would be the next date after...
Yeah.
6... Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can't see. 6/24 would be the Starbucks continuation. We'd have to split...
You don't want to do that to them.
So we would be in July 7...8.
7/8.
Yeah, I think that's more practical.
All right. The Starbucks case is going to take the whole night. You're not going to get in there. And you don't want us cranky after the Starbucks case. All right.
Okay, so for members of the public, this meeting is being adjourned and will continue on July 8th at 7:00 p.m. in this room. There'll be no further notices from the applicant.
All right, and thank you, everyone, for coming out. We're going to take a five-minute break. We're going to come back at 8:55. We're going to do Gar Monk Oil. And again, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and participating.
And then in about 2019, a building permit is issued for this project, I think in early 2019. And what happened here was that because this was a pre-existing non-conforming structure that was being expanded, that one of the requirements was that at least one of the four walls needed to remain on that building. And lo and behold, and the engineer will get into the testimony, but just wanted to give a little bit of a proffer here, that the contractor at the time erroneously removed the fourth wall. Don't know how, don't know why, but it definitely happened. And so what happened after that was apparently a stop work order was issued regarding the demolition of that fourth wall that was to contain the accessory convenience store. So this was after most of the site had been improved. The canopy was up, certain improvements were made to the site incident to the resolution. So what are we doing here? We are trying to thoroughly and comprehensively correct what needs to be corrected, bring before the board by way of amended site plan approval what was built on the property, what still needs to take place pursuant to that resolution with regard to that property, so that this board in 2025 can take a full and fair look at what's happened since the 2017 resolution and ensure that full compliance is made to the many conditions with regard to the resolution of approval back in 2017. And as our engineer will testify, this amended application does not seek to modify any of the conditions of approval imposed by that May 16th, 2017 resolution, with the exception that, and we'll get into this through the testimony, that as I just stated a moment ago, the size of the convenience store at the time as approved was 1,097 square feet. And there was a notch at the front right-hand side of that convenience store building at the time. And what we're intending to do in essence is to square off that notch. And as a result of that, the square footage of the convenience store is going to go from 1,097 square feet as approved to 1,250 square feet. We're talking about 153 square feet generally as essentially an addition. And ironically, as you hear through the testimony of the engineer and the architect, that addition is actually, or additional square footage is actually taking place in a compliant area of the lot. That notch area actually happens to be compliant in terms of setbacks, and we'll get into that through the testimony presented, as well as requesting, again, the D2 expansion of pre-existing non-conforming use/structure regarding going from the 1097 square feet to the 1,250 square feet. In addition to which, during the course of construction, particularly of some of the improvements, including the canopy, the improvements, as it turns out, were not constructed exactly within the locations that were on the approved plan. And we're talking in some cases just about, you know, less than a foot, or what it may be in terms of impervious coverage. But we're trying to clean that up and correct it and present it to the board, so the board understands, you know, what's there right now, whether that necessitates, you know, slightly different relief than what was ultimately approved. But we want to get into it, and the bottom line is that we want the board to understand what is happening today, so that it can fully and fairly consider the application and hopefully approve it as minimally amended here. So we will be asking again for some of that variance relief that we originally, or that the prior owner originally approved and sort of renewed amended application. So, and obviously, as part of any application that we present, we also ask for any additional variances, exceptions, waivers, or interpretations that may arise during the course of this evening. We were aware that we had limited time tonight, so what we are intending to do is start with our engineer to go through, like I stated, some of the history of the site, and also go through Bill and Catherine's review letter and try to hit as many of those points as possible. And if we have time, we also have our architect that we brought tonight.
Mr. Simon, you know, you do have a zoning violation. The date is 1/27/25, and the zoning officer also wrote a letter to this board. And it starts, "The area under construction has created a dangerous situation." So we have to address this violation. I'm surprised you haven't brought it up.
Well, the reason why I didn't bring it up, because it was frankly, admittedly, brought to my attention, literally, when I received the latest review memo with regard to this. And what I did do is I immediately, and we can get into this a little bit, but I immediately contacted the owner of the property. And from what I'm told, and I don't want to say hearsay, is that my understanding is that one township official may have said, "We want you to do this," whatever this is. And so the owner said, "Okay, I'll do that. I'll do whatever you want me to." Then another township official separately said, "No, you're not allowed to touch anything until you seek the proper relief from the board." So I'm being very honest. I don't know between the two sort of where it stands. I asked my client literally to get some clarity on that particular issue, and I wanted to have the clarity before this evening.
Okay. Well, the zoning officer has jurisdiction, and he's saying that there's a dangerous site condition, and, you know, you have to be very gentle with this neighborhood. They've had tremendous tragedy in the last few years. A little girl was lost, she was hit by a truck. So whenever I hear "dangerous situation," I don't want to create another dangerous situation, you know? And God forbid, anything as terrible happens again. I certainly don't want any hand in that. So we have to address this violation. You're welcome to my copy if you'd like it.
I would love that. And then, and frankly, I promise you that before we come back to any future meeting, which we're going to have to...
That's not good enough. This is a dangerous situation. So it's created a dangerous situation. The area must have a safety fence. So tomorrow, you must have a safety fence. I saw a safety fence there today. I also saw a piece that was down.
Okay.
Tomorrow...
The answer is yes, 100%.
Here's my copy, and let the record reflect that I've given you my copy, and that you're going to comply with the fence and rectify any dangerous situations that exist tomorrow.
The answer is yes.
Okay. And the zoning officer's name is there? Please call and let him know what you have done. I think there's seven items. And let him know your plan.
The only caveat to that is that when we do that, which we will, that we will provide notice to the other official who may have, for no, I don't know why, given maybe some contrary information, just so the record is clear, that we will absolutely comply.
Okay.
We have no problem doing that. We just want to make sure that we're not doing anything wrong vis-à-vis anyone else who may have jurisdiction, that's all.
Yeah, the zoning officer is the only guy I know right now. So, yes, please rectify...
The answer is yes, 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 of course.
I appreciate that, Mr. Simon.
Not even...
When I see dangerous situation, again, that neighborhood, I'm very sensitive to dangerous situations, and we want to make sure everyone's more than safe over there. So thank you for your help.
We absolutely will.
All right.
Yes, unequivocally. So, and thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate that. So with that all being said, so tonight, what I'd like to do is start with our engineer, Tyler Vander Valk, have him sworn, get him qualified, and then walk through the amended site plan and address the comments from the board professionals.
There's one piece of information you might share with us. When you spoke earlier of some of the things on site not having been constructed exactly the way they were purported to have been done, off a foot here, what have you, was that under current ownership or prior ownership?
No, prior ownership.
Thank you.
All prior ownership. Thank you for clarifying that.
Tyler, would you raise your right hand, and our board professionals, raise your right hands, please? I didn't get you last time. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, your full name, please?
Tyler Vander Valk, V-A-N-D-E-R-V-A-L-K.
Thank you. And our board professionals?
William, our board...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aller. Mr. Vander Valk, can you please provide the board with your qualifications and credentials, including occupation affiliation, areas of expertise, and licenses and experience in the field of professional engineering?
Absolutely. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing. I am the owner of Civilized Engineering out of Butler, New Jersey. I have been accepted as an expert in civil engineering before many boards throughout the state over the last 15 years.
Your license remains in good standing?
Yes, it does.
All right. The board accepts you as an expert in engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vander Valk, did you prepare the amended site plan with regard to this application?
I did. And for the record, the board that I have here tonight is last revised October 11 of 24, which should be the same set that the board has.
Mr. Chairman, we're not going to mark that unless otherwise...
No, it's what we have. It's part of the record.
Thank you. And Mr. Vander Valk, you're familiar with the property and the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay. And you're also familiar, you were here and present when I gave a brief introduction with regard to this application. I mentioned the prior approval incident to this property for the gas station and convenience store from 2017. You're familiar with the resolution and the plans that accompanied that approval?
Yes, I have reviewed this.
So with that, I would ask you to describe generally the proposed plan from an engineering perspective, addressing your site plan, improvements concerning the property, and as I stated to the board just a moment ago, I think it would be very, very helpful if you clearly explained what was originally approved, what was constructed, what was potentially constructed in the wrong location even slightly, and the relief that the applicant requires at this time, given the current circumstances.
So as was indicated, this property had previous site plan approval under which construction had begun, and a certain percentage of it was completed over the last handful of years. When my client, the current owner, took ownership of the property in 2019, the canopy had already been constructed, the tanks had been installed, the dispensers installed, the signage was installed, all of these things that had approval, they were all, permits were pulled and installed, the dumpster enclosure, et cetera. At that time, the building had been left. It wasn't, the addition wasn't done, that was approved. It was still in the same state as from prior to the 2017 approval. At, I believe it was around 2022 or 2023, the applicant decided to move forward on the permit for the building itself as far as constructing the addition and the renovation to the existing structure. As was mentioned, at that time, the contractor, again, for whatever reason, I don't know the specifics, the entire building came down when it was not supposed. It was supposed to be renovation and addition. Instead, everything was taken down to the footings. As a result, a stop work order was issued, and that permit was now no longer valid. And furthermore, the approval under the site plan to have that sized structure was no longer valid because it was just supposed to be an addition, and now it would be a whole new building. So really, the start of all of this was that, the need to come in front of the board for an amended approval, because now this was going to be a new structure. In analyzing the building that was approved for the site under that prior approval, the current owner saw that there was a small portion of the building that could be squared off to have a more economical use of the structure, more efficient use of the interior space, et cetera. So we thought it made sense, as coming in for an application regardless, to go ahead and square that off, again, approximately 150, 155 square feet or so in additional space for the store. So now we would have a 25-foot by 50-foot rectangular structure. If you look at the site plan, which was prepared by my office as part of this new application, you could see a faint red line in the body of that building. This is in the southerly corner, closest to the gas pumps. That is the deviation of the building footprint. So all exterior walls around the northwest, east side, those are all matching the prior footprint based on the prior surveyed location, and the deviation from that is the rectangular space to the south.
So when you say the deviation from the building footprint, what you mean is that the proposed addition that is essentially the 150 additional square feet, that's the location of that addition?
That's correct. The deviation from the prior approval, our new approval, our new application seeks this additional square footage. One thing I want to highlight as part of that is if we look at the allowable building envelope, which is these dashed lines in that area on the site plan, we have the 75-foot front yard setbacks on both frontages, 25 on the side, and you can see the envelope that it creates, that red rectangular fits entirely in that space. So this is the one area on the property where a building should be located, and that's what we're doing as part of this application, is infilling that area. Now, this is over top prior approved impervious coverage. So again, it's not, not only are we not expanding into unpermitted setbacks, but we're also not creating additional impervious coverage as part of the application. So that's the main change as part of the amended application. Now, in preparing these plans, we also identified changes that are not by nature of our choice. In other words, the prior contractor under the prior ownership, who had constructed the improvements as far as the canopy, the parking, et cetera, the landscaping, lighting, they did all of that. The canopy was located slightly different from what was approved. On the original approval, a variance was granted to have a 10.9-foot setback to Fender and Avenue, and you can see on the as-built survey that was conducted in 2013, that setback is at 10.0 feet. So we have a...
About 2013?
2023. I apologize. 2023. So we have about an 11-inch difference from what was approved versus what was constructed. So as part of our application tonight, in order to clean that up, we would seek a variance relief, and we will have a planner testifying at a later hearing regarding the proofs for that variance. In addition, the canopy, in addition to being shifted the 11 inches to the west, the canopy was also shifted to the north by about three feet or so, closer to four feet, I apologize. The approval was for 35.6 feet from Third Street to the south, and it actually was constructed at 39.3 feet. So a greater separation, yet because this is different from what was approved, a variance is required despite it being a better condition than what was approved. These are the deviations regarding the canopy. Another deviation that we seek approval for is signage. So the signage was all constructed, variances were granted for the pylon sign and the signage on the canopy. Since we're building a new building, we're having new building signage put on that building. The original approval was granted for 36 square feet of text area on that structure. What we're proposing is only 15 square feet. So we're seeking actually a reduction in that. The signage ordinance would indicate that 5% of the building facade can be used for a facade or building sign, which would be around 31 square feet in our new proposed structure. And in this case, again, we're going to have 15 feet, so less than half of what would be permitted.
15 square feet.
15, correct. And an image of that sign would be on, will be on the architect's rendering, so you'll be able to see what that looks like. Another variation from what was approved versus what was constructed, and certainly we could look at those approved plans if the board wants me to present them as an exhibit. Essentially, the dumpster enclosure was proposed further north in the parking lot, essentially adjacent to the ADA parking stall. Again, for whatever reason, they have shifted it south by a couple stalls. When I look at the plan, I imagine it's because access to that dumpster is probably somewhat difficult with the canopy directly behind it, with a garbage truck, certainly easier access in this location. But because of that shift, we have a reduction in parking stalls, because it wasn't put in an exact location where we could have a nine-foot stall on one side, or nine and a half in this town, nine and a half-foot stall on one side, and then the rest of the stalls on the other side, it was somewhere in between. So we ended up losing a stall in the process. That being said, parking requirements for this sized building, we have 1,250 square foot at four stalls per 1,000 square feet. So essentially, one stall per 250 gives us five required stalls, and that's what we're still providing here, one handicap, and then four traditional stalls for a total of five. So despite that loss, we still meet the requirement as indicated in the ordinance.
And Tyler, with regard to the revised, you know, how it came about, we're not sure...
Right.
The revised dumpster location, from an engineering perspective, you believe that because of the accessibility to it, that's a superior location than actually what was approved?
I think from a circulation standpoint, it will function better than the original approval, yes. A handful of items, then, of course, as mentioned, were already installed. I inspected the site, landscaping was already installed, lighting was, new lighting was already installed, the pole lighting, the canopy lighting, et cetera. There was no lighting proposed to be mounted on the building, so...
Where's the landscaping installed? I saw a bunch of dead bushes on the Third Avenue side.
When was it installed?
Oh, where? I see dead bushes.
Well, I'm not testifying to the condition of those plants. Certainly...
There you are.
...found to be in poor condition or damaged, then again...
You're presenting a as-built survey, so you just testified that landscaping was put in, and I'm telling you, there's dead bushes there.
The landscaping that was put in, it sounds like you're suggesting it didn't survive?
Do dead bushes constitute landscaping? I guess a good lawyer could make that argument.
What I'm trying to say is that under this approval, that landscape plan from the original approval, what we're suggesting is still valid. So in other words, if that landscaping didn't survive, under this approval, they'd be forced to replace that with living landscaping.
And a smart lawyer would say, certainly, anything that is currently dead, that is or anticipated to die in short order, will absolutely be replaced.
Correct.
Why don't you take, between now and the next hearing, because we're not going to finish tonight, why don't you take a look at the landscaping, and why don't you improve it? Shocking concept, right?
So, the answer is yes.
Okay.
So...
These are not hard things.
No, no, no. The answer is yes. Mr. Vander Valk, with regard to, just, we're going to go do that, are you in a position right now to maybe point out to the board maybe additional opportunities for additional landscaping, beyond the replacement of anything that is dead, diseased, or dying?
Frankly, Mr. Simon, I mean, you're living proof of measure twice, cut once. You know, it's, you know, how do we know anything that we agree to tonight's going to get done? Or will get done correctly in the right spot?
Well, the errors that happen, happened under prior ownership and prior representation by our professionals, and certainly with regard to any resolution of approval, should the board be inclined to grant that, there'd be certainly conditions which presumably would include, and they should include, all the conditions of the prior approval...
Ownership changed in 2019?
2019, yeah.
So you have a violation notice with a letter sent to you on March 7, 2025. That's two weeks ago. So it's not like things have changed with the new ownership. You still have issues. You have zoning complaints. So I'm curious why this board should give you deference on all these things you talk about, and you're kicking the can back to the old owner, but how do we know that you're going to comply with anything we say tonight?
We're certainly, with all due respect, we're not kicking the can to the old owner, we're just stating facts. And certainly, as an officer of the court, which applies also to any land use board, that certainly, anything that, at least under my watch, that any applicant has as a condition of approval or any representation that they make as part of an application that I'm involved with, will happen.
Mr. Simon, I'm just going to read it. A summons was issued on 3/7/25, that's March 7, 2025, for Blight in violation of 146-1 local ordinance. That's two weeks ago.
As I explained, and as an officer of the court, found out about it for the first time when I got, just being honest, and as we stated at the very beginning, in terms of zoning violation, tomorrow morning, 12 hours.
Okay. So, you know, you talk about landscaping. I'm telling you, the landscaping is dead. So how about we have testimony on, you know, hey, you got dead bushes there. Be a good neighbor.
That's exactly what we want to be.
Didn't look like you're being a good neighbor. I was there today. It looked terrible.
So, Mr. Vander Valk, in response to the chairman's comments and concerns, can you, even though we will take a look at that between now and the next meeting... Absolutely. Is there any, as you look at the plan right now, do you have any thoughts as to the ability to improve the look of the site, particularly with landscaping?
Yeah, I see potential gaps, certainly, in the original approved landscape plan, where we could infill with additional landscaping. I also noticed that with the fuel area being set high above Third Street, some of that landscaping just wasn't to the height that it could shield anything on the site. So maybe it's a different selection of plantings that would grow higher, grow faster, grow thicker than what was there, certainly living would help. And then as far as the rear, I know in the original resolution that I read, it seemed to be that the privacy fence was a preference, or at least it was granted as something that they could do instead of additional landscaping in the rear. That being said, we can certainly supplement planting all along that fence line.
And we will additionally, I will tell you, take a look at if there's other opportunities to provide enhancements of landscaping and...
Mr. Steiner, a quick question. Is the applicant in the room?
The applicant is in the room, yes.
Could we ask why it took two weeks before they would address a dangerous situation?
You don't have to answer it, but you can ask it.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm, the applicant's here, or the applicant representative, I should say, is here. Certainly, if the board would like him to answer that question, I'm happy to have him come in, gets, you know, come up, excuse me, get sworn and answer a question. Certainly, I did anticipate that he was going to be presenting testimony at the following meeting with regard to the operation, just so the board's aware at the same time that the professional planner is providing testimony. But if you prefer that he come up and answer that question now, I don't object to it.
I always hesitate to have you move your witnesses around. This is your case, and I want to keep you kind of with your game plan.
I just want to be courteous to the board and be responsible.
Reese, if you don't mind, maybe we'll ask him at the next meeting?
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have it.
Please, Mrs. Amin.
See, I was there to look at the site, and there's a lot of debris in the bank. And when I looked at that, I'm saying, why is this here? So I would make a suggestion that there will be no construction permit allowed until they clean up the whole thing. I mean, we can approve the application, but as a part of the condition, we can say that the township will not issue a construction permit to add the new building until you clean up all the junk that is on the property.
But that's certainly a fair condition.
Yeah, I get it.
You know, Mr. Aller knows I'm a board attorney, you know, in the area, I'd have the same condition. I think that's fair.
I would like to put that as a big condition.
100%. And in addition, I'm going to do you one better, which is that with regard to this, whatever this is, which I will read certainly, some of that may be addressed in a response to this, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
We will be responsive in a timely manner, whether it's resolution, compliance, conditions, or beforehand.
All right. So we've got about 40 minutes. Let's power through here.
Power through. Go ahead.
All right. So with all that being said, I want to cover essentially what our new variances are here. Again, we have the canopy, the variances, two variances related to the canopy in that the setback to Third Street has increased, the setback to Fender has decreased by 11 inches. We also require variance for impervious coverage. The reason being, we're actually reducing it by a tenth of a percent, but again, because a variance was granted for a different number, we have to update that variance request. Again, that's an improvement over what was previously approved. We do have one new design waiver request. We have a setback from the, we have a, I'm sorry, drive aisle behind the parking, specifically at the ADA stall of 23 feet instead of 24. That's because of the shift of the canopy. Again, as I mentioned, it had moved further northeast, which is exactly bringing us, bringing that one-foot deviation.
That's the... That's the less than four-foot shift.
The about four-foot shift, yes. Certainly, all the conditions from the prior approval, we would agree to have that continuous part of this approval. One thing I would note is we're actually going to have a change in the time of operation. Previously approved was from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and the new owner is looking to have 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so one hour less than the prior approval.
Can you give me those again?
Yes, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM would be the hours of operation, both of the fuel and of the convenience store.
Is that seven days a week, or?
Correct. Correct.
I actually think on the weekends, start a little later, potentially. I'll have him testify.
weekends may potentially be a little bit less, starting later in the morning. That's really all I had as far as direct. I was going to answer some of the questions in the professional review letters.
Sure. So why don't we turn to, this is the March 19, 2025 comments from the board planner and the board engineer.
If I may interrupt you for just a moment. We talked earlier about the zoning violation that was issued, and that's being addressed. What I'm looking at is this memo from John Tillotson, which is the other township official, I think you might have been referencing.
Maybe that's what I'm referring.
And I don't know if you had a copy of that as well, but that was dated March 19. And that speaks to an existing structure, and that was torn down, and it's left an unsafe condition as well, in the sense that says that it may, without permanent sanitary facilities, without additional approval, this may have to cease operations. So I don't know if you had a copy of that memo as well.
I don't know if that was part of.
Here you go.
The board.
Oh. And then it makes sense just to go.
Yeah, absolutely, and I thank you for bringing to our attention. And in fact, like I said earlier, had the operator call today, and we're going to follow up tomorrow as to both of these items and get everything squared away immediately. So with that, Mr. VanderVolk, with regard to what I think might be appropriate, if you can start with subsection E, the summary of the project review comments and recommendations, starting with the bulk standards and site layout?
Absolutely. So the first comment here is regarding the rear yard setback. I had shown a requirement of 80 feet, when in fact, the requirement was supposed to be 85, so we'll certainly correct that typo. It does not affect any relief needed. The building is approximately 87 feet from that rear line. Again, on the same corner where the prior approval had the building, but we'll be compliant there. As far as the front yard setback from Findern, that is measured to the corner. We just pulled the leader a little bit away so that we wouldn't be overlapping with some of the other line work, so just for legibility. But that is perpendicular from the corner to Findern at 52.8. The front yard setback dimension is not shown to Third Street. Again, just to avoid too much overlap of text, but it is in fact the 80.2, which is shown on the plan. Letter D, this is the question regarding the canopy. What is the accessory setback supposed to be? I'm calling for 52.7 to Findern. That really should read 52.8, so an apology there, 52.8, change that by a tenth. The reason that I set that number is so that it's behind the furthermost part of the principal structure, which I think is the requirement for the primary street. On the secondary street, the requirement would be 75 feet, as labeled. There's some discussion about variances, which we talked about. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that's what I just wanted. So the, so your testimony earlier went over the conditions that were constructed differently than what was approved, correct?
Yes, specifically the variance for the canopy, yep. And the reduced impervious coverage. There is a comment about the building height. The height is increasing from the original approval by about 11 inches on the building. Certainly, we're still more than conforming at 19.7 feet, where 35 feet is permitted for the zone. But again, the original approval was for 18.8, so there's about 11-inch increase there. And you'll see in the renderings from the architect, this is all about the roof lines and the different products that we're using that are going to really clean up this building. Signage and landscaping, so as mentioned, no change to signage, except for the one that's on the building, which is actually going to be reduced. The landscaping, we're certainly going to take a second look at the original approved plan and try to supplement that and improve that, while also cleaning up any plants that are not surviving currently. Yes, we agree to all the conditions of the prior resolution.
So now you're on the engineering comment.
Yep, so C1, we would agree to all conditions of the prior resolution. C2, we discussed what has been constructed already, essentially everything but the building. And now certainly, we're going to redo that landscaping. Hours of operation, we talked about. As far as deliveries and loading, anything that's a regular-sized vehicle, a lot of these things like chips or soda come in a smaller box truck, they would be able to fit in the loading spot for the refuse area. If it's something slightly larger, I know some of the soda trucks come in something a little bit, a larger box truck, there's area to pull on along the side here, on the south side, and still remain out of the way of circulation. Deliveries typically happen, you know, each product has its own delivery, right? So you have your sodas and your energy drinks come in one truck, chips come in another truck. And usually, I have about one of those a day for this type and size of operation.
And per the resolution from 2017, there's not going to be any deliveries during the overnight hours.
Correct.
We would comply with that.
That's correct, correct. And certainly, no tractor trailers or anything of that size. Talked about the hours of operation. Architect will give their testimony, so going over to page eight. The perimeter fencing was installed, there's.
Can you just identify for the board where that fence?
Sure, so this is shown on the as-built survey. It's about two feet, one to two feet onto the subject property off the property line, and it's a new six-foot privacy vinyl fence, which wraps from Findern down the sideline towards the rear, and then comes forward towards Third, approximately 50%.
There's two pieces of fencing on the eastern property that are knocked over that are, that need to be fixed.
Absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
We'll take care of that.
I think we're up to the condition of the six-inch PVC roof leader to the inlet.
Yeah, we'll have to review the condition of that and how far they installed it, because the intent of that was to also collect the roof leaders, which we're still proposing on our plan. But how much of that was installed with the building work not, hadn't been done yet? We're going to have to inspect the, how much of that was built and the condition of it, and we'll verify that it's all functioning and installed as part of the approval.
Mr. Burr, a comment about the grading on the site?
Yeah, I noticed along Third Street, there's a sort of a low area before it comes back up to the sidewalk. It's part of the subject property. It was dry today. I would imagine during heavier rains, maybe it ponds a little bit. The only solution would maybe to bring in some fill to get some better slope, but it would drive it across the sidewalk. I'm almost thinking it's better to leave it the way it is, but certainly, we can discuss that with the engineer.
Question about confirmation of ADA compliance on the curb ramp, sidewalk, and accessible parking spaces.
Yep, we'll be sure to add the additional details to confirm compliance. What is the current condition of the sidewalk along Findern? So as part of the prior approval in 2017, they had to put in new sidewalk along Findern. That was done. If that is damaged in some way now because of the work that was being done on the building, or just maybe time, certainly, we'll bring that back up to standard and repair if needed. And we'll look at that when we look at the landscaping. Any new utilities? No. So the utilities were to the building site already. We're not going to be cutting into the street for new utilities. Installation of approved lighting, so I was out there today. The new light poles and fixtures are all installed to the same count and location as proposed on the prior approval, so we're not looking to make any changes in that regard. The only lighting that's going to be on the proposed store, we're going to have gooseneck fixtures that light the sign back towards the building, so it's not going to be sight lighting. It's just going to be to light the signage itself. And you'll get a picture of those, and the details on that are on the architectural plans. Certainly, in 13, if there are, if there is any light that's spilling into unwanted areas, I think there was in the prior resolution, a condition that we would have to readdress that, and that continues to be the case. So if there's a complaint that there's a glare on Third Street or onto the neighbor's property, and we need to add additional shielding, certainly, we'll do that.
And the applicant would not be opposed to having Mr. Burr come out and take a look at the lighting upon an approval in its condition, and if he has any modifications that he recommends that we would comply with them?
Absolutely.
I think that, according to my notes, we covered, oh, let's talk about maybe, let's see, we talked about landscaping. I think we covered all the comments.
All right, and anything that you didn't address specifically, we're going to assume that you're going to agree to?
Yes.
All right, why don't we open it up to board comments if you're?
I have a question. Since you testified on incorrectly built canopy, on the history of that, I'm not clear, how did that eventually get approved for use, if it was incorrectly built? Is that, is that known anywhere?
I don't know if an as-built submittal was required prior to, I don't know, do they have a TCO or CO right now? I'm assuming they have a CO. It's been five years, but.
Right, they have, I mean, we don't have any information as to how it came about, for example, with the canopy, why it was, you know, 10 feet away instead of 10.9 feet away. No idea how it was approved, the circumstances, why it was built in that location. At least, I don't, anyway.
Or do I?
Okay, thank you.
Do you have one question? You were talking earlier about those things which had taken place prior to the new ownership, and we're trying to rectify all those things, or at least acknowledge them, memorialize them, and get the appropriate variances where needed. There's something which is a little more, I think, qualitative, which has to do with being a good neighbor. If you've owned it for six years, and here we are today with two violations, which came in late, I guess, in the process, why weren't some of these things done to the benefit of the neighborhood? Why not clean up the site if there's debris there? If those plants died, I'm sure they didn't die yesterday, they've been dead for some time. Fencing that was not put up could have been put up. So when you're asking the board for approval, the board is looking to not only keep the neighborhood safe, but keep neighbors happy with their neighbors, and having people pay attention to their needs, as well as the needs of the business owner. And yet, after six years, there's no evidence of that. So I don't know how we address that.
Well, that's well said. And I think that, you know, certainly, we can, at the next meeting, have the operator come up and give some explanation to that in the interim.
And I just was told that the first summons was in March, and when there was no response to the first summons, the citation was issued, and that was in March. So, you know, this has been happening since earlier in the year, so.
I understand.
Yeah. Well, and also, you know, you have a number of board members that were on this board in 2017 that sat through the three hearings, and, you know, it's, again, they're volunteers, and people like me are missing birthdays and time with their newborn kids to be here, and it's unfortunate. And I know you run a land use board as well, and, you know, it's something that, you know, I think when you have upset board members, you shouldn't be surprised by that, and you don't seem to be.
Not.
Anyway, any other board questions?
I have some questions about the parking area. So one thing, because of the change to the building, you're asking for relief on the drive aisle behind the ADA parking spot. So did you look at the site kind of with a large vehicle parked at that pump island and to see? Because when I think drive aisle, I think of traffic moving, and in this case, you actually have traffic parked, right, to fuel? So is there more clearance required then, because you actually have cars parked at the pump island?
Yeah, I hear your question. I had a similar thought. Is the drive aisle, maybe it should be measured to that parked car getting fuel rather than all the way to the dispenser, right? Because you have a condition where a car could be there. I don't disagree. I was mirroring the approval that was previously granted, which measured the 24 feet to the dispenser, not to a car being there. If we want to button that up, you know, we're talking about bumping the parking lot another 10 feet or so further east into the steep slope area, additional impervious, et cetera. So given that, the operation here is really about speed. You know, people come, they fill up. It doesn't take that long, a few minutes. Same thing with the parking. Typically, people are in and out. These spots rarely see parked cars. I actually worked for many years across the street from one of this applicant's stores, and people typically leave their car at the pump, and they run in the store. These spots don't see a lot of use, and when they do, it's someone grabbing a soda, and they're in and out so quick. So I think with the amount of turnover, if they have to wait an extra two minutes to get another spot, I don't think it would be detrimental to the operation. The other thing is that those dispensers and the queuing areas, those are angled away from that parking area, so as long as we're backing out to the west rather than to the north, I think that gives us additional flexibility. Certainly, for the next hearing, I could prepare some exhibits that show vehicles getting in and out.
Right, I mean, I like to see an ADA van being able to pull out in one move.
Sure.
With cars parked at the fuel pumps.
Okay, we'll put something together for that, yep.
All right, that's all, thank you.
All right, board professionals.
Just, I guess, just a couple, Mr. Chairman. Heard a lot of testimony about the history of the site, how it got to where it is today, and I'm just, I guess I'm just, I just want to close the loop on what work actually still remains if this amendment is approved. So the new building gets constructed, the sidewalk and accessible entrance in front of the building gets constructed.
Correct.
And then, is it, is it just a matter of restriping the parking spaces? Is that all that's left? Setting aside what was discussed earlier as far as landscaping enhancements, et cetera, is that's all that's left to kind of perfect the prior approval? Is it the striping, the new building, and then the sidewalk in front of the new building? Is there anything else that remains?
Other than a few things we talked about tonight with the landscaping and the drainage pipe, yes, yep.
Right, okay. On the prior approved plans, I think from 2017, I think I heard, or 2018? On the prior approved plans from, looks like they were signed in 2018. Looks like the proposal was for a Shell gas station, and the signage was based on the Shell emblem. Is it now a Delta? Is that what the current, is that what it's going to remain as, a Delta?
Yes, when the owner purchased it, he rebranded to the Delta, correct.
Do you know if the Delta signage that was installed, from a sizing and quantity perspective, matches the Shell that was previously approved? Have you looked at that?
I don't, but I understand from the applicant that permits were pulled for that rebranding.
Okay. Permits were pulled, but I guess we're finding out that loop wasn't necessarily closed at the time of a CO? And I don't know if, I don't know, I don't know if it was.
No, I think, I think Mr. Burr raises a fair question, and certainly, we can go back and check in terms of the size of the signage.
Right.
That was approved, just to confirm.
Right, okay. Yeah, and just, for the board's benefit, I think what is becoming apparent is that there were no site inspections being performed on the gas station renovation previously. With any development that this board approves, there are inspections by either the engineering office or the planning office of the site improvements outside of the envelope of the building itself. I'm not sure if inspections were performed. So I've driven by the site, but I'd like to take the applicant's offer up on visiting the site, taking a look at what the prior approval entailed, and making sure that all the site, taking a look at what the prior approval entailed, and making sure that all the improvements are in good repair, the sidewalk, the landscaping we spoke about, the lighting. If the board's in agreement, the applicant's in agreement, I think that's a good use of time before the next meeting.
Yeah, you're the expert, we trust you.
Very good.
The applicant's in agreement.
Great.
Thank you.
Catherine.
My only comment was just to agree or to agree with the landscaping comment. I know the board had made that before the applicant agreed to do it and addressed it in the review memo, but I do think there's an opportunity to kind of dress up the site a little bit and really improve it with a little bit of landscaping. I had nothing else.
All right, thank you. Members of the public, questions on the engineering testimony you've heard tonight? Now is the time to come up and ask questions on engineering. Hi there, we just need your name and address, please.
I'm Anthony Salvatore Cortez. I live at 598 Bridgewater Avenue.
Thank you.
And I'm concerned for safety, it's my main concern. I've seen two people killed right opposite the gas station. One was a woman whose body was thrown up in the air from a car coming out of Manville, and she was thrown into the, right into the gas station. And I saw an 11-year-old boy riding a bicycle who was also killed there. I formerly would take my gas can and walk across Findern Avenue from my home to get gas for my lawnmower. I no longer do that because Findern Avenue is now a raceway. It's not a, well, it's a county road, but it's not what it used to be. You know, it's a raceway now, the light turns...
Mr. Cortez, it's time for questions of what the engineer...
I'd like to know what they're going to do about safety. A car heading south on Findern Avenue towards Manville, turning into this facility is a dangerous situation. How do you propose to alleviate some of this? That's my question.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and at the end of the hearing, there'll be a time where you could make any comments for or against. I'll give you as much time as you need at the end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, certainly I feel for that situation. In this case here, we're not looking at modifications to the driveways. If it was felt that the separation, for example, from the southerly driveway to this intersection is causing an issue, we have the opportunity to shift that maybe 15 feet away from the intersection, reconstruct that driveway, if the board felt like it would make a significant difference. But really, we're not looking to change anything as far as, I know we're increasing the square footage by 150 square feet, but we're not talking a traffic change because of that. And again, these driveways, I think, have been this way for many years, and maybe that's the wrong way to have it. The only other solution I would say is to bring those driveways away from the intersection potentially, if that's the, if that's a concern.
Any other questions for the engineer? Hi, we just need your name and address, please.
Jeanette Jardine, 614 Second Street. So I have a few questions, first of all relating to traffic.
Just use the microphone there, thank you.
One of my first questions is regarding traffic and the traffic patterns on Findern Avenue. Findern is one of the most heavily trafficked roads. It's a two-way street across four lanes with the egress and the entrance and the exit on Findern Avenue. What are the proposed safety measures for spill-over onto backed-up traffic into Findern? Currently, the cars that are trying to circumvent the light go through the side streets at increased speeds. What safety measures can be put in place, and also, has there been a traffic study?
For this project at 150 square feet, there wasn't a traffic study performed just due to the nature and size of the application. As far as issues on the public streets and people circumventing traffic lights, we can't control that on our property.
In light of that, I would like to ask the board, so put a traffic study in place. I live on Second Street between Findern and Fulton Avenue. I have four children, one of which is the same age as the young girl that was killed on Fulton. It is these type of situations that back up traffic, causing cars that are already going too fast with no lights to cut through these streets at high speeds, putting our children at risk. Next question. How many proposed workers do you use, are you going to have to pump gas and to run this mark?
There would be two employees in total, one running the store and one running the fuel.
That being said, if we have five spaces and we have two employees, that means we only have three spaces left. If we have a tractor trailer that comes from Odessa who's taking up two bays, how will you sufficiently address the three minutes that you're saying it's going to take many people to go in and out to grab a soda? Where will these people park?
Employees on these sites, and again, knowing the operation of the applicant here, as I've done many projects for him, they typically carpool. I've seen him running much larger stores with three or four employees that typically all come in one car. It's just the nature of the operation. So we don't foresee having two stalls used by employees.
Currently, there is a large advertisement on the fence. Is that something that is going to continue to be marketed? Was that approved by the town?
Any illegal signage should be removed, and we'll look into that. Thanks for bringing it up.
In terms of being a good neighbor, we came to Bridgewater for the charm, for the suburbs, for the safety for our children. We have been both to the meetings previously, and the applicant has not been a good neighbor. I would like to know for the future, and for really right now, what do you have in place to keep the site clean? I have yet to see anyone actually responsible for doing that. We're coming upon a summer in which they usually let the grass go two, three feet before we have to call a town, which brings rodents, animals, impose other situations for children, especially my children and their friends who come over. How do we know that there's going to be a difference in how it is our neighbors have been treating us?
That sounds like a question for the operator, and you're going to get that opportunity to ask the operator those specific questions.
There keeps to be mention of a previous ordinance of convenience store. Are you aware what was sold in this convenience store prior?
Before the 2017 approval, the original, original building? I'm not aware of their operation, I'm sorry.
I'm concerned about the wording in this. Previously, what this gas station sold was, it had one singular refrigerator with soda cans and water bottles. Their convenience items were windshield wiper fluid and occasional bottle of oil, motor oil, that is. When we're talking about being grandfathered in or opening a new convenience store, we're talking about deliveries, we're talking about more debris. Debris flies into my yard all the time. Not only is there noise, we have gas deliveries all hours of the day and night. With these deliveries, and only these three sites, two sites for the workers as he had indicated, we have box trucks that'll come deliver Coke, Pepsi, Frito-Les, coffee, snacks, candy, food.
Oh ma'am, that's really good questions for the operator at the next meeting because he's the person who'll have that information.
The operator will testify as to the subject.
How will we be guaranteed that these deliveries will in fact happen between operating?
We're asking questions on the engineering testimony, so things that he talked about, we can ask questions on.
What are the safety precautions that are put in place in the event there's a car, and this has happened before, there's an auction not far up, there's a car that comes in, there's some gas spillage, and you have gridlock, so to speak, because you have other cars blocking? What are the safety precautions that are going to keep the neighbors safe enough to accept this type of gridlock and lack of parking spaces and egress that's going to go onto Findern Avenue?
Well, I think we need to hear from the owner about the number of parking spaces that are needed, how many employees he's going to have. I know we heard from the engineer a little, but that's really stuff for the owner the next meeting.
And my last question, is there any way, I know you had mentioned before, going back into the previous approved plans to make sure that what is put in place does actually happen? That is specifically including the signage, the amount of trees that are actually going to get put up? I have found, and we have been there since day one, even making suggestions, even calling the owner at a certain point, there has been no good neighbor behavior in terms of doing the bare minimum, and I would really like to see that change. And once the landscaping is approved, how do we make them accountable for keeping it safe, keeping it clear, keeping it looking vibrant, so that it doesn't look like the very dangerous trash pile that it is right now?
They'll be, assuming there's an approval, there'll be a condition that the owner has to maintain the landscaping and the buffers, and if they don't, there's a mechanism in town to issue violation notices to him and bring him to municipal court if he doesn't.
And just my last two cents here, I watched the actual building being taken down, and by no means was that an accident, that the entire building was completely demolished. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Simon, I think we're going to take this opportunity to wrap up for the evening. Nancy, if you could help us out with another date to continue this case?
We have 5:13 after the residential variance application, if Mr. Simon is...
Rod, does that work for you and your team?
Is it, I'm sorry, May 13th?
It's good. No, May 13th?
Okay, the answer is yes.
Okay.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, so for members of the public, this meeting is being adjourned right now and will continue at the May 13th meeting at 7:00 PM without further notice from the applicant.
I can't hear you.
I've been waiting all night long and just wanted to have my turn to come up for a minute.
You'll still have your turn, I'm sorry, we have a policy 10 o'clock, I've already gone behind it. If your question is mission critical, by all means, let's get it on the record, but if...
The whole of the evidence there.
Sure, it's important to me too, but, you know, as volunteers, I can't keep the board here all night. We heard two cases tonight.
This has looked like a third world nation for a hand...
And we're not taking statements now, it's really just, it was questions for the engineer, and we'll continue with the engineer at the next meeting, but we're not taking statements right now, okay? It's just out of order, it's later.
The Karen first case had some comments and they didn't...
And you can still make the comments at the next meeting.
Yes, that's what we've heard, the owner-operator is going to testify at some point in this...
He will testify at some point, at least the current plan, and I'll talk to my development team, was to have the architect go next in terms of describing the convenience store, but I'll talk to them about the order.
It sounds like the members of the public have a lot of questions on the operation, so, okay, you heard that. All right, we're going to wrap up, we're going to adjourn the meeting. This case is done for tonight. You're out of order, thank you for coming. I promise you, you have an opportunity to ask questions and to make a statement, but right now, we're going to finish up our evening. We're going to adjourn this meeting, our next meeting is 7:00 PM in this room, April 8th. We're going to hear the Paul Miller Group and the Visions and Pathways case. So with that, if there's no other business?
I move.
All right, Mr. Wabelli, Mr. Bonjuarno, thank you, everyone.